At this time, we will make, take a moment of silence to allow each member of the city council and those in attendance to prepare their hearts and minds to appropriately do the business of the city. At this time, I would like to welcome all citizens attending the meeting. But not the mosquitoes, okay? I just killed one. City Secretary April and Elections Administrator Margaret Hill will present the official election results from the May 1st, 2021 District 3 election for the canvas.
Good evening. Our Elections Administrator from the Victoria County, Marjetta Hill, is here to present the official results from the May 1st election for the Council to canvas. She will read off the results.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Okay, these are the results, official results, for the councilmember District Number 3. It was a total of 2,252 votes. Erin Francisco, 460, and Jeff Bautnike, 1,0792.
The election results in total, as well as from each precinct, have been laid at the city council's desks there for your review. And the only thing that we officially have to do to complete the canvas is for Mayor Pro Tim to sign the canvas form, unless any of y'all would like to re-total everything.
Don't do it, Mark.
What's the under vote?
The under vote is ballots that no one voted for anyone in that race.
So they might have gone to vote for the school bond, but not for that election?
That's correct.
Thank you, April.
Okay.
Thank you, Maria.
With the canvas complete, we will now need to hand out the certificates of election as well as the statements of office. So Angelina's going to assist me with handing out the statements, and I will hand out the certificates. They have been signed by Mayor Pro Tim Solis.
And as they do that, I will remind Mayor Pro Tim and councilmembers that our upcoming regular city council meeting next week on the 18th, we will conduct the swearing-ins for all of you that will start a new term, as well as conduct the election for Mayor Pro Tim. And so we'll do those two items next week.
Did you want these dated today, or not? Okay, thank you. You double checking if you got elected? Okay, Ricky's official now, okay. Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and councilmembers. The only, the only announcement I have is related to food. And so, in a, in a few minutes, before we start our public hearing, I ask that we take a brief break to allow everyone an opportunity to get some food. There is not really ever a clean break in the presentation that is planned for tonight, and so it'd be easiest to get food before we begin the presentation.
Okay, I agree. Are there any items not otherwise listed on the agenda for which members of the city council would like to request specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, or a placement on a future agenda? Seeing none, I will go to Citizens Communications. Comments will be limited to two min, three minutes in duration. There will not be an opportunity to provide any presentation or visual material. Please remember to silence any cell phones so that we can clearly hear your comments. It is generally the practice of the city council not to respond to comments during this time, but city staff will be available to follow up if necessary. Are there any comment cards? I don't think we have any. I can't see behind it. Okay. We have an item for public hearing. April, can you read the public hearing announcement?
Yes, ma'am. Item C1 is an ordinance calling a special election for July 3rd, 2021, for a councilmember District 3 for the city of Victoria. This item is being presented on emergency read.
Am I supposed to read it? In Spanish?
If you would like, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm the go-to.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, Solis, and council. The ordinance before you tonight will call a special, additional special election to fill the Council 3 place. The election will be held on July 3rd in conjunction with the special mayoral election that we previously called to fill that vacancy. Applications for a place in the ballot will begin to be accepted tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. at my office, and the filing period will end on May 24th. The District 3 election will fill an unexpired term that will end on, in May 2024. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
We have to vote on this? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Also need a public hearing, because it's an ordinance.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Anybody here to talk to us about the public hearing? Any public hearing members? Hearing none? I need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, first and second to, to pass this ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We're going to go ahead and break right now before we start the meeting for the joint meeting between us and the Parks and Recreation Commission, okay? Food!
Has everybody made it back to their seat?
Yeah.
Has everybody made it back to their seat? Here, I don't recall exactly which chairs were taken and which ones weren't. No, it's okay. That's fine. I don't know where Justin went.
Mayor Protim, I think we're ready to resume if you are.
Okay, if you don't mind me munching.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so, I don't know, Lee, I don't know if you've had a chance to officially call your meeting in order, but now would be the time.
Okay, I'll do that. I'd like to call the regular main meeting of the Victorian Parks and Rec Commission to order a note for the record that all members of the commission are present except for Commissioner Eater and Commissioner Billingsley. So we do have a quorum. And without objection, I'll just dispense with the reading of the minutes of last meeting. We'll pick that up next month and we'll go ahead, so we'll be in order.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that. I want to turn it over to Jason, Parks Director, so he can introduce the topic and then spearhead, along with our consultant, the discussion for this evening. Jason?
Thank you, sir. Sorry, this microphone's a little larger than what I'm used to, so, uh, uh, thank you, Mayor Protim, City Council, Parks and Recreation Commission, good evening. We do have half-ass associates here today. Really pleased to bring them and to show the conceptual designs that we have for the Parks Master Plan and also to provide y'all an update. We have Christian Lentz, who's a principal planner with Half Associates, as well as Aaron Cooper, landscape architect with Half Associates. Both of these folks we have worked hand-in-hand with throughout this master plan process, as well as the conceptual design workshop. So, without further ado, I'll pass it over to Christian and Aaron.
All right, thank you so much, Jason. First and foremost, I just want to make sure Recreation Commission, we really appreciate you having us this evening and giving us the opportunity to talk to you about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. But first and foremost this evening, really to talk to you about some design ideas that we've been generating with the assistance of city staff, different stakeholders in the community and the general public for three key parks in the city of Victoria. We've got up until, I believe, about eight o'clock this evening to speak with you. I hope this evening we're going to have a lot of lively and also hopefully friendly conversation this evening when we go through these ideas. But, once again, we appreciate you having us and thank you for taking the time. Before we actually get into the presentation, I just want to make sure everybody's aware, in front of you at the tables, you do have all of the slides that are going to be in this evening's presentation right there by you. I'm going to give you a little forewarning. There are a couple of slides that are out of order, but Mike, Jesus, don't you worry, we haven't changed any of the content. It's all the same from what you've seen, but there are some slides that we've moved out of order, so we hope we don't confuse you. In addition, before we get into the program, I wanted to make sure that you all understood that everybody in front of them at the tables has a copy of some of the initial conceptual design ideas that we're going to be discussing this evening for some of your key parks. What is very important for me to convey to you is that what we're presenting to you tonight are not recommendations. So, they're not recommendations. We are not coming to you this evening to say, "This is what you should do for each one of these parks." We're still in the middle of the planning process. We're still in the middle of the conceptual design process. The workshop that we're having this evening is part of this design process. So, even though you see plans in front of you and you'll see them on the screen, it looks like, "Oh, this is what our consultant is telling us we should do." In reality, at this point in the process, rather than recommendations, we just encourage all of you to look at them as ideas. They're not "shoulds," they're "could's" at this point, and that's why we're talking to you tonight, to get some real feedback on the direction that we're going, to see if you're comfortable with that direction, and to get some really good ideas from all of you about what should occur in each one of these parts. With all of you, to specifically talk about conceptual design, redesign, development ideas for MLK Park, for Ethelie Tracy Park, and for, of course, Riverside Park. But before we do that, it's important to remind everybody that the conceptual plans that are being developed for all three of those parks are actually part of a much larger Parks and Recreation Master Planning Process, as you all know. We are also in the midst of preparing a system-wide Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the city of Victoria. So before we actually get into the specifics of each one of those three individual parks, we do want to be able to take the opportunity to tell you what we've done, what we've heard, and what we've observed up to this point in the planning process. So, we'll do that over the course of the next twenty, twenty to thirty minutes, and then we're going to take that deep dive into the three specific parks we'd like to talk to you about. I don't believe, I don't know if you've all gotten this information in advance, but later during the workshop this evening, we are going to ask you some questions where we hope that you've been able to download or get the Poll Everywhere app on your mobile device and can actually take part in some interactive polling. I know we've done this previously with the Parks and Recreation Commission, so hopefully, the majority of you around the table have been able to get that app on your mobile phone. If not, the slide that's on the screen now is also in the handouts in front of you, and when we get to that point, hopefully you'll be able to take part in some of the instant polling that we have. But first and foremost, again, we want to talk to you about the overall status of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'm actually going to start off by showing you a couple of slides that I think you were provided a few weeks ago when Mike Etienne provided you an update of the master plan. But just as a general reminder, just as a general reminder regarding the scope of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, what we're looking at is essentially, as a city, as a community, what can you do to deliver Parks and Recreation services, public Parks and Recreation services, to your constituents? So when we have a system-wide master plan, we look at all of the parkland acreage that's available for your community, compare that to other communities. We look at all the recreational facilities you have, how they're distributed throughout your community, what the condition of them is, and we also consider the types of recreational programs that you, as a city, are offering the residents of your community and those programs that other organizations in your community are offering. Ultimately, the whole process is intended to get out to the public and say, "Hey, citizens, residents of Victoria, when it comes to public recreation, what do you want to see? And is the city providing that to you? What can they do to better and more efficiently provide those types of services to you?" I'm sure many of you remember this graphic. I believe you've seen it in prior presentations. But this process really can be broken down into a four-phase process, and we're kind of in that in-between period between Phase Two and Phase Three, where we've been able to get a lot of public input, primarily from the public surveys that were distributed and responded to. We've been able to get a lot of public input. We've gotten a lot of data from city staff. We've done a lot of research. And so now we're generating some assumptions, some ideas of where you're at as a community in providing Parks and Recreation and where you might be able to go. So, we're in that key part where we're starting to formulate and make recommendations, but we're not quite there yet. We're still putting all of that information together. Up to this point, as we've been compiling all of the necessary information to go forward and make recommendations to you on how you can efficiently provide Park and Recreation Services to your residents, we've already been able to prepare the first couple chapters of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And so really, for the layperson, what those two chapters do, Chapter One basically says, "Why are you doing this?" If you're a member of the public and you have no idea what the plan is for, Chapter One tells you what the plan is for. Chapter Two is essentially just an inventory. It's your existing conditions. We're just documenting what resources, what park and recreation assets you already have, and just making sure that that information is accurate before moving on to the subsequent three chapters of the plan, which are the needs assessment, the overall recommendations, and a plan for implementation. And when I say a plan for implementation, I mean the types of investments you'll make, how different projects might be prioritized, what would be the timeframe that you make those investments or changes to the types of programs you deliver or policies for how you maintain and operate your Parks and Recreation system. We've conducted quite a bit of stakeholder and public outreach up to this point. We've had interviews with the majority of members on City Council, although I will admit, there's a couple of you still that we need to have some individual conversations with, and we'll make arrangements through Jesus's office to do just that over the next couple of weeks before we get too much further in the plan. We've had a series of focus group meetings with different interests, whether they're interest groups directly involved in providing Parks and Recreation Services to your residents or whether they are interested in economic development and how you can leverage your Parks and Recreation assets to bring people into the community. But we've talked with quite a few people early on in the process to get a sense in advance of sending out surveys and polling the general public of what really the hot topics are in Victoria when it comes to parkland and recreational facilities and such. In February and March, we had an online public survey where we had just close to 350 respondents. We also, as you're well aware, had individual surveys for the three parks that we're going to discuss in more detail. We've had town hall meetings in March, and we had concurrently a public information booth at City Hall during that time. And finally, all of those materials from the public open house have been passed off to Jason and his staff. So hopefully, here in the near future, they'll also be able to take that information out to other groups who may not have been able to attend any of the town hall meetings or participate in the surveys and continue here in the next month or so to get additional public input into the process. So I want to take just a few minutes to talk to you about what we've heard so far, what we've observed so far, and really, these are just initial assumptions. I'm not necessarily going to say that based on what we've heard or observed, I don't think we're necessarily in the position to confidently say, "This is what we really think you should do." Again, we're still in that process of just comparing what we've heard from people with the data that we have and other factors. But let's go ahead and give you a very high level of things that we've observed and heard. First and foremost, we know Victoria has combined seventeen different park properties. That includes the Moody Boat Ramp, which we weren't completely aware of, but we were actually down there a little bit earlier today. Almost five, eight hundred fifty acres of public parkland, just over fourteen acres of public parkland per 1,000 residents. Now, in and of itself, you're like, "Well, so what? What does that actually mean?" Well, what this slide shows you on the very far left, it shows just over, at fourteen acres, Victoria offers fourteen acres or a little bit more of parkland for 1,000 residents. When we compare that to agencies nationwide that participate in a data collection program by the National Recreation and Parks Association called Park Metrics, when we compare that to all the nationwide organizations that participate, the median is providing 9.9 acres of public parkland for 1,000 residents. And when you consider only those communities that have populations between 50 and 100,000 people, you're looking at a median of offering of 7.7 acres of parkland for 1,000 residents. So when you look at those metrics and you look at those measures, you're like, "Well, we do really good. Case closed. It's done." But of course, you know, we certainly would never analyze the efficiency, the adequacy of a park system based on one metric. And one of the first things you can see on the slide is, yeah, there is a lot of parkland acreage that's offered to your residents, but over, basically, two-thirds of that acreage is offered in Riverside Park, so in one specific location. We also consider not just raw acreage when it comes to parkland, we also consider how that acreage is distributed around your community and how accessible it is. The other issue, going back to the table that we introduced you to, is when it comes to larger parks, like a regional park, Riverside Park, or community parks like Ethelie Tracy or Ted B. Reed Park, the city performs really well when it comes to how many acres you provide for 1,000 residents. When it comes to neighborhood parks, and you've got about a little over 25 acres of neighborhood parkland in the city, the city of Victoria offers under half an acre per 1,000 residents. And just for comparison's sake, most communities in Texas that we work with, when we are recommending targeted levels of service for acreage, we recommend two or more acres of neighborhood parkland per 1,000 residents. That's generally the standard. Often, sometimes there's communities that say, "Well, we want three or more acres." But generally, we're going to recommend two or more acres of neighborhood parkland because generally, neighborhood parkland is often intended to be the most accessible parkland to your residents. Talking about that issue of parkland access, from the survey that was conducted, what we heard was, out of all the respondents, just over, close to 57% of respondents said, "To get to a park, they drive." Now, that pie chart also, you know, we're talking about the primary way they get to the park. When they consider all modes of transportation, once again, there's a very high percentage of people say, "At least some of the time, we drive to get to your parks." And the reason that's important goes back to the issue of access. That's all well and good that you have a lot of people driving to your parks. Able-bodied residents, that's no issue, but when you talk about vulnerable populations, people with disabilities, seniors, minors, the idea that a lot of parks aren't necessarily within walking or biking distance can be an issue. This map shows, I know it's a little bit hard to read. This map of Victoria shows, in I guess the light yellow color, all of the different residential areas in the city of Victoria. We also show your parks in Victoria with quarter-mile and half-mile buffers around them. These are radial buffers. They're just quarter-mile and half-mile, as the crow flies, so to speak, to get to those parks. When you look at accessibility, there's about 21% of all of the residential areas in Victoria are within a quarter-mile or a five-minute walk to a public park. And generally, you find a five-minute walk, for some able-bodied people, a 10-minute walk is really the extent of what people are willing to do when it comes to walking from their place of residence to a park. Now, this is, this slide, actually, this data is still going to be refined before you see the final Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Because what these radial buffers don't consider is, well, what about that highway? That big highway that divides the neighborhood from the park on the other side? What about that big drainage canal? So what we haven't done yet with this data is, we haven't actually clipped it to consider barriers to access. So once we do that, the final plan will actually show that when it comes to an accessible walking route, that there's actually a smaller percentage of your residential land areas that are within a five-minute or 10-minute walk of a public park. We've also been conducting throughout the first couple months of the process, a parkland conditions assessment. Now, I want to be very clear, when it comes to parkland conditions, we really are looking first and foremost at the land, at the property, at the accessory amenities, whether it's playscapes, signage, trails, fencing walls, the condition of your sport courts and your ball fields, things like this. The parkland conditions assessment that we're doing, led by our landscape architect, Aaron Cooper, is specifically focused primarily on grounds and the types of structures that a landscape architect typically will work with. It does not include an assessment of the condition of your indoor recreational facility. So it does not include any sort of structural assessment of this building. It doesn't include a structural assessment of the baseball stadium, for example. We've been talking with city staff, and our understanding is that the intent will be that there will be a separate recreational facility study to look at those particular structures. And those are the types of studies, I'm a planner, Aaron's a landscape architect, those are the types of studies that specifically require an architect and in some cases will require a structural engineer to conduct. But when it comes to the system-wide observations, your parks span the range of condition, and this is preliminary results. Yeah, there are a number of parks that score across different categories of vegetation, of landscaping, of hardscapes. Above average, and there's others that are below average. But what we're finding is, it's not necessarily because of obvious deficiencies in maintenance. It's simply the issue that you all see and are already aware of. It's simply the issue of aging infrastructure. And so, when it comes to some of the specific findings, Aaron, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
That's definitely not due to lack of maintenance. It's lots of love.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, people, it's funny because a lot of the things we're looking at that say, "Oh, well, you know, these things need more maintenance. They're a little bit worn out." They also happen to be the exact same facilities that your residents are saying, "We want more of these things." So, it is an interesting observation, Aaron. So when it comes to conditions and what we're finding, it's pretty interesting that when it comes to funding priorities, that the top funding, the top-ranked funding priority from the public survey that was conducted was improvements to your existing Parks and Recreation facilities. So, the vast majority of people who said, "If we had additional funding to spend on our Parks and Recreation system, what would you spend it on?", they were saying, "We want to spend it on improving what's already out there on the ground" as opposed to a priority on programming or a priority on new parks or new facilities. In addition, when we asked in the survey, we asked a question about the types of recreational facilities or other amenities that people would like to see added or improved in the park. What we found is, it wasn't, oftentimes we'll poll a community and we'll find that there's all of these very special recreational amenities that people want, that they want added to the system that they don't necessarily have now. In the case of Victoria, we found it was really a mix of, "Well, you know what? We just want more playgrounds." Or, "We want improvements to the restrooms," or "We want improvements to lighting. There's security issues." The one constant that we find, though, is that when it comes to new facilities, people rank trails, 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 really high, and that is, that's a constant with every single community that we work with on Parks and Recreation Master Plans. We'll also have this very interesting graph in the final plan report when it comes to recreational facilities. And really, the easiest way to define what you're seeing on this particular chart is, the closer you are to that diagonal target line, people are saying, "You know what? Not only do we want those things, but the city is sufficiently providing those things to us." And it just so happens that some of the things that are very far down and to the right of that target line also match some of the recreational facilities that were on the previous slide. People saying, "We want more of these things," or "Better examples of these things." All of this data will go in, and all of the conditions assessment data that we're putting together will go into the final plan recommendations when we say, "At this park, we would recommend that you fix these, focus on fixing these things." Or, "At this park, we would recommend that this type of facility be replaced or be added." All of this information really goes into the same set of recommendations on a park-by-park basis that we make. Here's where we go out of order a little bit. I really didn't want to talk about this subject, but Jason Alfaro was insistent that we talk about restrooms this evening. And you saw from one of the earlier slides that it is a very popular topic in Victoria when it comes to restrooms. Now, the survey question from a couple of slides ago, or the response when people said, "We want", it said new or improved restrooms. It kind of offered the option. What we found was, in the majority of written responses, a lot of people clarified that it was basically fixing the restrooms rather than adding a whole bunch of new restrooms, although certainly there are people, as you would expect, that want to do that. But a couple of things about restrooms, because it's a strangely dangerous topic. So, you know, restrooms can be beautiful and artistic, as you see in the images on the left, and they can be artistic and a little less beautiful, as you see on the upper right, or not very nice at all, as you see on the lower right. The issue with restrooms is, we all know that no matter how beautiful they are, somebody's going to abuse them at some point. I mean, they're always going to take an inordinate amount of maintenance to keep in good condition. So, when it comes to the idea of citizens in your community want new restrooms or they want improved restrooms, our recommendation, and this is a consistent recommendation we make to every community, is you need to be very meticulous in how you target where restrooms go. What I mean is not, "Well, it needs to be in this particular lighted open field in Riverside Park versus off in the woods here." I'm not talking about that. What I'm talking about is, we find, if you put a restroom there, you're inviting a bigger audience. So, this slide says that if you have a facility like Riverside Park, you can assume that Riverside Park, we know is designed to invite people, not just from your community, but from outside of your community, to Victoria. It stands to reason that if you are inviting people to your community, that you should have restrooms and other similar facilities there. Restrooms, parking, in some cases concessions, other support facilities. The same may hold true for community parks, if we're talking about Ethelie Tracy Park and the amphitheater there and the fact that you might, from time to time, have performances there. Well, it stands to reason that you're bringing people in from an area that's not just a walking distance, and you want to have restroom facilities there. But when it comes to neighborhood parks, those smaller parks that are within a neighborhood, adjacent to a couple neighborhoods, we very rarely recommend that as a community you get into the business of putting restrooms there. By definition, a neighborhood park is intended to be a park that provides service for the immediate surrounding neighborhood and provides service within that quarter-mile or five-minute walk shape. I get it. I know that sometimes when you have a mother bringing their children down to the park to play on the playscape and there's an accident, that it would be great to have a restroom in that neighborhood park. And that's the tendency to want to try to supply that facility. But at the same time, let's think about it. If that's your neighborhood park and now you put a restroom there, you're advertising that this isn't just for your neighborhood anymore. You want to start bringing in other people into your neighborhood, and that can create situations which that neighborhood park is not intended to serve. So, there's never, there's never a never here. But in general, our recommendation is to try to avoid the temptation to respond to putting restrooms in most of your smaller parks unless there is a very special situation, and quite frankly, only you will know that on a case-by-case basis in your community. Jason, that was a great? That was a great?
I'll just briefly add that obviously there, the logic on the neighborhood parks is, if it's designed for the neighbors, you need to go to the bathroom and just walk home, right? And so that's kind of, you know, how that goes. And then, one of the things that's a slippery slope with restrooms, too, is that once you put them, it's very, very difficult to remove them. And so, it's just one of those things where it's hard to trial and error that, because, you know, it's one thing to say, we'll put them, and if it doesn't work, we'll take them off, or take them out. Then it turns into a much bigger issue. So, anyway.
Well, yeah, and you know, you've got eight neighborhood parks. So, if for whatever reason, you set the trend, and you put a restroom in one of them, oh boy, you've just bought eight restrooms. Within the few years, that'll be what the expectation is. I don't know why I felt the need to spend so much time on restrooms, but I guess that shows you how scared of that topic we are.
Well, actually, it was helpful to me, so I appreciate it. That makes sense on the neighborhood parks, and it's not that obvious if you don't think about it all the time.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it matters, too, to a certain extent, to kind of tie it into our discussion tonight, I think it also makes sense when we're talking about the conceptual plans, because, you know, there might be, there might be some neighborhoods, or some parts of our community that, you know, want a public restroom, or want certain amenities, and they might want, what typically comes in a community, or more of a regional park setting, they might want that in their neighborhood. And so part of our challenge is trying to educate them that, you know, this is a neighborhood park, you should only have X, Y, and Z here, and maybe what the community really wants is a community park, right, that's much larger, that may not, that may be non-existent right now. And so, I think that can potentially tie into some of the conversation that we might, we might have later as well.
All right. Well, we can always talk about restrooms later, I'm going to go to trails for now, though. So again, that's the issue of trails. It comes, it's absolutely no surprise to us, that trails is a very popular recreational facility in Victoria. And really, from the standpoint of people saying, we want more trail mileage in our community. I apologize, I know it's hard to see on this map where those existing trails are, so I'll just go to the next slide. There, you can see the buffers over the existing trails. Now, City of Victoria has 8.6 miles of what we would define as multi-use trail. And by multi-use trail, we're saying, people can walk on it, they can hike, they can run, they can ride bikes, if it's paved, they might use scooters, or some other wheel transportation. Generally, we're talking about a multi-use trail, designed for the most part for non-motorized transportation, although even that comes with kind of a caveat, that that's a slippery slope discussion as well. But you've got 8.6 miles of multi-use trail in Victoria today. As you can see from the buffers on that map, the vast majority of that trail mileage is confined to Riverside Park. And when it comes to the percentage of your residential areas in Victoria that are within a quarter-mile, walking, five-minute walk distance from trails, that's really only 7%. So, we know that there is a lot of opportunity, and a lot of potential for an expanded trails network in Victoria. One of the points I'll make is that, as the slide shows, you've got 8.6 miles of trail in Victoria, when you compare that once again to the communities that participate in the NRPA Park Metrics Program from across the nation, you'll see that the median trail mileage is 11 miles. And the, and I will tell you, that that Park Metrics Program doesn't differentiate between the scale, the geographic size of a community, it's just a median number. And then when it comes to median trail mileage for communities of similar size that participate in the program, that median mileage today is 15 miles, or in 2020, it was 15 miles. We know, we're certainly well-aware, that Victoria has a hike and bike plan, Paseo de Victoria. And we know that that plan shows the potential routes for additional trail segments in Victoria. This Parks and Recreation Master Plan will also have to show where an expanded trail system might go. Certainly, we'll take some of the recommendations from Paseo de Victoria, but this planning process gives us an opportunity to reevaluate and potentially look at other trail corridors. Where are those trail corridors? Sure, some of them might be along a roadway, if the geometry is enough that you can actually have a wide shoulder on one side, and can safely get a trail parallel to the roadway. Some of them, the other obvious candidates are utility corridors, are drainage corridors, but ultimately, one of the outputs of this process will be an expanded recommended trails map, and certainly, another one of the outputs of the process will be some priority trail segments that are recommended. For all of you on council and the Parks and Recreation Commission, we are coordinating with a consultant that's working on the Drainage Master Plan, so we've had conversations within the last couple of weeks with them. They know and acknowledge that the recommendations they're making on expanded drainage corridors, that they also need to account for the possibility that some, or maybe even all of those, might be suitable corridors also for multi-use trails as well. But trying to identify where we can add some additional trail connectivity around your community will be a key recommendation, or a key set of recommendations that are included in the final Parks and Recreation Master Plan. One other topic we want to talk about, based on what we've heard from the survey also, is recreational programming. And we'll just touch on this for a little bit. One thing I want to make very clear is that when we talk about recreational program, and perhaps expanding programming opportunities in the future, I don't want any of you this evening to think that we're saying, oh, guess what, all of this has to be on the city's shoulders. Now all of a sudden, city, you have to go from the primarily athletic programs that you're offering, you've got to meet every single thing on this list that people say they want, now you've got to offer art, and music, and all of these things. We're not saying that, we're just saying that when we ask people about what they'd like to see, and they identify it, this plan just identifies opportunities where the city may offer new types of programming, or the city may partner with other organizations to offer it, or partner to allow other organizations to provide an expanded suite of recreational programs, perhaps in some existing facilities where that opportunity is. Now, when it comes to why certain people have not participated in city programs, from the sample size we got in the survey, the vast majority said, hey, we're just not aware of what's offered. I can't speak to that, how the city may or may not have advertised those programs in the past, but there are a lot of people out there saying, we just don't know what is out there. There's about close to 30% of respondents saying, eh, you know, we're aware of it, but the timing might not necessarily meet my needs. But then there is that third subset of people saying that, hey, the programs that are offered, whether it's by the city, or other vendors, just don't meet my needs or interests. And so on the right-hand side of the slide, you can see the types of programs in which you'd like to participate, and the response is, first and foremost is, the public here, and we've heard this in the focus group meetings also, they say, look, we want more events, we want something else to do at Community Center Park, or at Riverside Park, or at Ethel Lee Tracy Park, we want somebody to provide us more reasons to go there for purposes of special events and productions. And then you can see also on the slide, that there's a variety of other programming interests that people have just indicated they have.
Do you think that the number-one public special events, concerts, festivals, et cetera, was skewed by last year with the pandemic? People wanting to get out, and they've been missing those events that were possibly there prior?
That's always possible. There are some people through the focus group, well, there's two things, though. First off, through the focus group meetings and the one-on-one conversations, we didn't get that sense from the focus group people. I have to go back to see exactly how we worded the question in the survey, but I can tell you, before people got to that question, there were a lot of questions that said, over the last two years, including before the pandemic. And so, we tried, we definitely tried through the survey process to condition people to answer in a way to where they were considering before that period.
That may be hard, like in a court of law, when someone says something and said, strike that from the record, when it's already been said. Just food for thought.
I have a question. On your percentages, what are they a percentage of? Do they get to choose their top three or something? Because they don't add up to 100%.
No, they don't, they don't. This was, choose all that apply.
Choose all that apply?
Yeah.
So what does the percentage show?
Well, for every, every, I mean, there's a separate one for each category that was offered, there was a list of different options people could respond to. I don't have it off the top of my head, it's all, we did, I think, has council been provided all of the survey results, though? I know you asked us to send these to you. Oh, not these. We've got all of the, I know Jesus and Mike and Jason have all of the survey responses, and they can provide that to you, so you can see in more detail how the responses break I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure what I'm, what I'm missing in the question.
Well, I'm just asking, you know, it's, I would have expected maybe the question was, what has kept you from participating in city programs? 62% of the respondents said, I am not aware of the programs that are offered. The next highest was number two, and then the next highest was number three, but after you take everything that was offered, it would add up to 100%. But this doesn't tell me 62% of what?
It's, 62% of all respondents chose that response, but they could choose multiple responses. They could give us all of the reasons why they haven't participated in programs. So there will be, there are survey respondents that will have made multiple choices, I didn't do it because of this, and I didn't do it because of this or this, as well.
How many people responded to the survey?
337 people to the overall city survey. May I ask, any of, any of the information that I've, that I've provided you on these initial findings, any of those topics you want us to go back to and elaborate on, or provide any additional information?
Can you go through the restrooms again?
Jesus, what I see from this, and the whole group, is the ability for us to better market, I think that addresses, I am not aware of the programs, at 62%. And then I think it also, with the other events or interests that the public overwhelmingly put down for programs they'd like to participate in, there's a lot of programs here that are offered in our community. How they're marketed, I'm not sure, but I know that those, those events and opportunities are there. So from a marketing standpoint, and we talk about marketability, and really telling our story a little bit better, but I think that there's an opportunity to address that, which would benefit the public.
Yeah, absolutely, and obviously, we've been talking about that, you know, for a while now, it's just, how do you promote all these events, right? And it's a challenge that, you know, Ashley and Joel, you know, wake up every day thinking about, is, how can we get people in the know of these events? And they come out, right? Because I mean, like you, the first thing that came to my mind when I saw the results, you know, were people saying, well, they want more outdoor festivals, and it's like, I didn't see you at, you know, I didn't see you at the event downtown last Thursday, right? And so, part of it is the PR part, but the second part is, you know, if you really wanted to take a deep dive, you almost have to do a whole follow-up analysis, right, to really kind of determine, okay, what are we missing here, right? Because we might be having outdoor musical events, that may not be hitting, you know, what people are actually wanting to see in types of music, you know, or other elements. And so you could really kind of break it down, if you really wanted, if we really wanted to spend the time, you know, to find out, okay, is it because it wasn't the type of music that you like, you know, or whatever the case may be. Now, we know that in our community, you know, the Hispanic Tejano culture comes out strong, right? I mean, if we think to the Cinco de Mayo event that we had at Delion Plaza, and Daniel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had close to 1,500 people there. And when we have, you know, some of the other concert series events, you know, we're lucky to get 100 people out there. And so, you know, clearly, the community is, conveys to us, you know, which types of events they come out in droves for, and so we just need to do a better job of matching what we provide with what the community desires to see, right? And so, part of our challenge, especially on the recreational programming side, and really, it's Jason's challenge, is trying to structure the department and the personnel to focus more intentionally on trying to fine-tune that, so that we're not just winging it with the events that we put on, but that's actually based on something that's more hopefully successful, if it's based off of some research, some data gathering, some polling, surveys, you know, you name it. But it's a combination of all the above at the end of the day. Any other comments, questions on any of that?
I just have a little concern that only 362 people responded to a survey, and we're basing that info on building a tenure plan.
Sure. Well, it's not just on that, right? I mean, keep in mind that there were always, there was also some focus groups, right? And so those focus groups weren't necessarily, you know, answering every single question, that's part of the reason why we have meetings like these, right? Especially with our elected officials that are elected to represent their constituents. And so, in no community are you going to get, you know, thousands of survey responses, but it provides an opportunity to have dialogue. And that's why we go through a process like this, which is exactly the direction that they're looking for, is, okay, this is what the results of the surveys were, is it accurate? Are we headed in the right direction? You know, what needs to adjust, right? Because we'd like to think that as parks commissioners and as council members, you, well, especially from his perspective, he definitely thinks that we all have a better pulse of our community than they do. And so, this is the perfect opportunity for us to say, you know, if we don't agree with something, or we think something was missing, I mean, now is the time to start talking about it, to ensure that the final product truly incorporates what we want. Because at the end of the day, it's our plan, right, not half's, right? They're just trying to help us get there. So, I, do you have any follow-up that you, input that you'd like to provide on?
Not right now, but...
Okay.
Jesus, I'll just add, of course, anytime we're getting public input, we all know that at the end of the process, that public input that we've gotten is a sample size. And it helps inform us, but we also understand that there ultimately, at the end of any planning process, might be some interests that weren't ultimately represented. But, to that point, we also know that appointed and elected bodies in any community oftentimes have to make decisions, well, just about at every meeting, with much smaller sample sizes of public input to assist them in making those decisions as well. So, it's a sample size that helps us make educated guesses on what your community may want and may need, but to Jesus's point, we always try to augment that with ongoing dialogue with all of you, with the focus groups, with staff, and other groups that we know are involved in your community and are informed. Any other questions about the background information? All right, let's go ahead then, and start talking about MLK Park, Ethel Lee Tracy Park, and Riverside Park. This is a part of the program that Aaron's actually going to help me a significant amount with. But really, I wanted to give you quickly, just a couple more slides of background information. When we prepare conceptual site plans, or conceptual development plans for a specific park, this is where we're diving much more specifically on how the physical space may change over time. Basically, what we're looking at is, how can you take any given park space, whether it's already developed, or it's an undeveloped raw piece of land, and how can you enhance it to ensure that you're giving your residents the type of park experience that they want at that, at that particular time? So ultimately, we're obviously going to be looking at different physical constraints and opportunities with any given site, we're going to look at opportunities with how that site potentially links to other properties or destinations around it. And ultimately then, the key is, we're preparing a detailed site plan for that specific park that we're analyzing, to get ideas of how the park spaces and facilities might be adjusted. And by adjusted, how existing facilities may be removed, how new facilities may be added, how things may be moved, or renovated, or otherwise enhanced. Ultimately, the final conceptual plan for each one of those parks does come with cost projections for the overall potential improvement of that park space. And in the case of Riverside Park, given the scale of Riverside Park, and how important it is to everybody in your community, we're going to make sure that it also includes a series of projected or recommended phases of development, so those improvements can take place over an extended period... So those improvements can take place over an extended period of time. And certainly also, we're going to include with that park, different aerial images and illustrations to augment the site plans that are ultimately generated. Because oftentimes, when we finish these processes and the city or community is really on board with trying to make those improvements, we like to make sure that those graphics are available so that, to help you actually market that potential experience to people in your community. Now, when it talk, there's, there's probably some thoughts or questions about why these particular parks were chosen. Now, you know, ultimately, why they were chosen, I will defer to city staff on why these are the specific parks that were chosen. But all, but really, it comes down to two things. First and foremost, from the map, you can see that these three parks are well distributed throughout your community. So you've got a park on the west side, on the north side, on the south side of Victoria. But the other reason why these three parks were chosen is that they, they represent the three primary types of parks or classes of parks that you would see in your system. Riverside Park being that large regional park that can actually, in addition to just improving your residents' daily quality of life, can actually be an economic driver, bringing people into your community, generating revenue. Ethel Lee Tracy Park is a community park where it can draw people in, not just from the neighborhoods around it, but from other areas of, of your community. And from time to time, have events or activities that also perhaps are revenue generating as well. And then MLK Park as a neighborhood park. And, you know, utilizing MLK Park to come up with some design ideas, not just for that park, but perhaps which can then be emulated in some of your other neighborhood parks throughout the community. So, more than any, MLK Park is kind of, in a sense, kind of an example park that, that could potentially, when there's a final conceptual plan generated, conceptually be utilized in other locations. Mike, did you have something?
No, I just want to say how proud we are of city council and the Parks Commission for selecting those three parks. Mainly because of the equitable distribution of those parks. You know, you have one park on the north side, you know, Ethel Lee Tracy, a centrally located park in Riverside, and you have MLK on the south side. So, we really appreciate council and the Parks Commission's support in selecting this equitable distribution of the park system in terms of a conceptual. So, thank you for doing that.
One more time, again, it's in your handouts, but we'll just remind you that here in a little bit, we, we're hoping that people can participate with us with the interactive polling questions. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Aaron. And remember, what Aaron shows you, you've also got copies of all of these on, on your desk. But I'll turn it over to Aaron to start talking to you about the conceptual design ideas, once again, for Martin Luther King Park.
Can't hear you. All right. Evening, everybody. Again, my name's Aaron Cooper. I'm a landscape architect with half-associates, and I've been helping assemble these conceptual plans that y'all are about to see this evening. We're going to start with MLK, Martin Luther King Jr. Park on the south side of town. Then we're going to move up to the north side of town, look at Ethel Lee Tracy, and finish off with Riverside. So we're going to start small and go bigger and scale. Let's see. I did want to point out that you do have two handouts in front of you this evening. One is a stapled packet that includes all of those concepts you will see. One is a standalone sheet that has just representative imagery of some of the things that you will see in these six concepts this evening. So, if you see something on a legend that's in front of you on that map, your answer might be on the sheet, but please ask me as we're walking through these concepts together. If you have questions, feel free to interject. So looking at Martin Luther King Jr. Park, it is on the south side of town. It is kind of the traditional civic space. You'll notice that all of those functions are in the core of the park. And that's largely due to, it has roads on three sides of it, and you don't want your program activity to be right up against the road. So, it does have a playground, a large covered pavilion with picnic tables, and smaller pavilions with picnic tables on it. It does, on the north side, that north corner at Baker Street, it has a dedicated parking, parking lot. But it also has parallel parking along Callis Street. Pleasant Green is four lanes, there's no, no parallel parking along that side. There's also a basketball park, or basketball court, a full court. So, the things that we saw in our responses on the surveys, and this is kind of listed and frequency of which we saw them, is that the number one thing was improved and expanded playgrounds. So, the existing playground that's there is, is kind of out of date. So, looking at updating that and maybe changing some of the elements. The second thing was picnic seating and gathering areas. It does have covered picnic facilities, but perhaps updating those, making a larger picnic facility that could, you know, somebody could have their birthday party in that pavilion that lives in the neighborhood. Restroom was frequently mentioned. There was the restroom conversation, if any of you need to be reminded. Christian's right there. Lighting, safety, water fountains, splash pad, path sidewalks and trails, and dog park were also mentioned in the survey responses. Yes?
In the, in the survey of responses, this is still the three hundred plus that responded initially?
No, so that's a good question. I was actually just about to interrupt to have you all clarify that. Because we did have separate surveys that were specific for the conceptual parks. And so actually, MLK Park actually had a good, had a good turnout.
Yeah, for the scale of this park, we did have fifty-four responses specifically for MLK Park.
From that neighborhood?
Correct.
Around there, okay.
Well, maybe not specifically from that neighborhood, because people could respond from elsewhere in the city, but, yeah.
I just, I want to know where these.
It was a very, it was a very specific link, you know, just for the MLK survey.
Okay. I just want to know where these respondents came from. Were they local, or were they somebody on the north side of town, or in another neighborhood, which?
Yeah. Well, we definitely tried to distribute to the surrounding neighborhood.
Sure.
Right?
But we don't, we can't tell you specifically where all, where the fifty-four came from.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it tracked, you know, address of the respondent or anything of that sort. But the, the push was definitely to try and get folks from the, from that neighborhood to respond.
Thank you.
I did get input from some of the neighbors there that did respond, so I do know there was quite a few that did go to either the website, or they met with somebody, because I did have input from that neighborhood.
We, we did try to target those areas by placing out signage in those specific parks that were related to these surveys. So the hope was, and the attempt was, to, to really just kind of hone in on those, on those neighborhoods or those, or that specific area.
But you know, I've, I've really learned some things tonight, because I, I knew that MLK Park, or the neighborhood park, was called a neighborhood park. I knew it was smaller than the other parks. But you've really kind of clarified things for me about the purposes of these various types of parks. And if you're asking me about a park that's down the street from me, and you ask me whether I'd like restrooms, of course I would. You ask me if I'd like a splash pad there, of course I would. But I didn't understand, and do understand better now, the purposes of the smaller parks. And so, I'm, you know, kind of shocked by some of these answers. But to me, I think that that's one of the pieces of information that we need to educate about the different purposes for the different parks.
So, with those things in mind, let's, let's go ahead and look at the first concept. Which I've got here. So, this, we're calling this one preliminary concept A. And the, the primary design feature of this is, it's kind of a linear design. And it goes from, you know, one corner, which is, for those of you that like cardinal directions, the left side of our screen is north. So, if we go from the top right of the screen, which is southeast, to the northwest, which is the bottom left side of our screen, we've got this primary promenade. All of the elements are aligned along. You'll, you'll see that there's a large pavilion that would have, it'd be a covered picnic pavilion. You're changing on me, Christian. It's like, wrong concept. Back to concept A. So, it would have that covered pavilion in the center, sort of that core area. And we'd be updating and enhancing the play equipment along with that. There'd also be a splash pad, which splash pads, yes, can be very large and attract a lot of people. But if you keep it very small, few elements, that's not going to attract people from, you know, the region. These can be appropriate items that are seen in a neighborhood park. It could also be perhaps maybe a in-ground sort of fountain. It's more of a decorative feature, but it could be interactive and have, you know, little squirts of water coming up from the ground. That could be an appropriate type of splash pad that you might see in a neighborhood park. So we've included that, you know, up there with the pavilion and with the restroom, or, not restroom, sorry, with the pavilion and the playground, to really keep that, you know, that core area activated in this park. There'd be sort of enhanced vegetation. You can see that there's a number ten, and that's landscaping, and it's just kind of providing a buffer, visual buffer between that core and the street, the corner of Pleasant Green and Callis Street. And there could also be an outdoor classroom, and, and that could even be paired with a community garden. And, and that, that could kind of float around in that space. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, in that kind of quadrant that's facing Pleasant Green, but it could be up towards maybe Baker Street instead. You're going to see sort of unprogrammed space that's around that core. This, this could be better used if, if, you'll notice along the street edges, we're providing these kind of dashed-looking lines of like green and pink. And, and that's sort of indicating that there would be maybe a low seat wall and maybe low shrubs that, that provides that visual barrier between the streets and those, you know, sort of unprogrammed space. And that, that would allow people to, you know, throw a frisbee or kick a ball, you know, play catch, and not feel as intruded on by the street. You'll also notice that, so the one element that is remaining from Martin Luther King Park today is the parking lot. We've enhanced parking by, well, on Callis Street, there's existing on-street parking, but if we provide bulbous, or they're called curb extensions, and you can put a little bit of vegetation and trees in there. And that, that kind of provides a little refuge for vehicles to park in. So enhancing that parallel parking along Callis Street will really help, you know, help define this edge of the park.
Question. Where's the picnic tables here?
The picnic tables would be under that, that sort of white block that's got the number one on it.
That would be the only picnic area?
There could be additional picnic tables, absolutely. But yes, in this current concept, as shown, there, there is a slightly larger pavilion than currently is at Martin Luther King Park today. But there could be additional individual picnic tables that are also covered.
I've got a couple of other questions in regards to what's missing from this.
Sure.
I don't see swings, slides, basketball court, soccer goals, baseball backstop, anything from a getting out and being active standpoint from a neighborhood.
Yes, so this has been sort of the, you know, direct reaction to the initial concepts and the feedback that we received. And none of those items, well, I mean, backstops weren't mentioned, baseball wasn't mentioned. Yeah, we're not showing that. Swings would be included in the playground. That's a very typical element that we would see in that. And we're not defining what those individual play elements would be at this time. But yeah, that's something you would definitely typically see.
I'm just concerned, Victoria, as a community, is very involved with baseball and softball.
Soccer.
Soccer, yes, as well.
Question. I noted that Dr. Young mentioned the fact that you did away with the basketball court?
This concept does not include that original basketball court.
I know that it has one right now, because you mentioned earlier that it does have. And as to answer your question that, Young, in that park, I don't think there's sufficient area for you, for a baseball stop or soccer. I mean, the area is kind of congested already as it is. But my only question was the basketball court.
Yeah, I mean, if, if this were the preferred concept, you know.
You look at the, you know, the neighborhood, you know, you have a lot of basketball players in that area.
On, on the concept B, it looks like there's going to be basketball court back on there.
So, so again, yeah, these, these are, these concepts are just could's, they're not should's. So, so yeah, we're not saying, this is it, you only get A or B. But yeah, maybe it's a combination, but maybe we take something from B and add it to A, or something from A and add it to B.
Yeah, and I will, I, actually, my, my, can you all hear me?
No, thanks.
Somewhat.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, I, I did want to add about the, about the field space. You know, this is, we're talking about a three-acre space here. And I know that there are some neighborhood parks in Victoria that might have a backstop in them. Generally, generally, when we're talking about a space like this, and we know that there's a lot of different facilities people want to see added in there, generally, when it comes to the open lawn area, those open play areas, you know, our recommendation is as much as possible to keep those informal, rather than putting in a specific facility like a backstop that says, this open play area should be, you know, a baseball diamond or a baseball field. As opposed to, it's just an open play area. If you want to hit a ball, or you want to throw a ball, or throw a frisbee, it's appropriate for all of those. We oftentimes will work with communities where we see some of those very specific programmed elements in smaller spaces. And while every once in a while, somebody uses them, we find oftentimes, they're, they don't get utilized enough to warrant their location in that particular space. Oftentimes, when it comes to additional ball fields, whether it's soccer, or whether it's baseball, that are intended just for general recreational use and not necessarily competitive play, those are oftentimes things that we would promote in a larger community park, whether that's an Ethel Lee Tracy, a Tedby Reed, or, or a Hopkins Park by, just by way of example. Now, I'm not saying, we're not saying that that ultimately, if you say, no, we really want things like that in here, we're not saying, no, it's not our position to do that. I just want to provide a little background on why concepts may or may not show some of those things. That's all.
I have a couple of comments, I guess. One of them is, if you're going to have running water in a park, and you're going to have young children, or you're going to have old people, you're going to have to have a restroom. If you're going to put running water, you're going to have to have a restroom. And so that's something to think about seriously. The water fountain, maybe, but, secondly, I see that you've got a community garden here. And it occurs to me that in a community park, if there's a place in our city for the city to be putting in fruit trees or nut trees, it might be a community park concept. I was thinking about that on some of the trees we're going to put along the loop. Well, that's not a smart place for it, but just as I see this garden, I'd just like to plant that seed in terms of the type of vegetation.
Absolutely. And community gardens can be kind of a tricky thing, because it really does require ownership of the people who want it. So, while we may have seen these things, you know, in our feedback on the surveys, it's really going to require a lot of effort on, on locals to, to take that idea and run with it. But if that space is provided to them, that could happen. But it definitely requires a lot of attention.
I think that's an excellent idea, Ms. Scott. Lemons or lime trees for vegetation, or an orange tree, you can go pluck one off.
Or pecans.
Yeah.
One, one other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, when we've been talking about trails throughout the city, that this could be an opportunity to provide access to a potential trail corridor from the park. So you'll notice, under the existing parking lot, which is A, there's item seven. That could function as a trailhead, which may have a bike rack. If you rode your bike to the park, you could lock it up. You could have a little bit of signage that shows you where you are in Victoria and where else you might be able to go using this trail system. And we could have a potential trail corridor along that drainage canal. We've also provided access, you know, sort of a bypass, you know, through the park along that trail system. So you'll notice sort of the curvilinear sidewalks that are going to connect you to the corner of Pleasant Green and Callis. There's also an existing bus stop in the park. And we didn't want to take away access to that, or suggest that it needs to move to a different block. But we did think we could really enhance that by providing a curb extension or bump out along Callis Street. So it's sort of that pedestrian bus stop refuge out of the way of traffic, but sort of protected by parked vehicles. Welcome, any other comments for this concept A? So. This is where we're gonna say, please take out your cellphone, we're gonna do some voting. So, we, we've had great discussion, and, you know, we'll welcome it again later too, once you've seen B, but let's, let's get your initial feelings about Martin Luther King Park, you know, preliminary concept A. You know, one would be, I love it, let's do this, and all the way down to four is, no, not, not, not at all, it's, this is the wrong direction, don't, don't even look at this one again.
One, one comment. I didn't almost want to bring it up, but your trailhead and your continuation on to the potential future trail, I like that, but it, I would suggest that we try to tie it in on a corner walk path already, as opposed to middle of the street.
Sure, like bringing it back.
We've had problems with middle of the street crossings already in town.
Let's say, is it Baker Street that's there on the north side, it is a dead-end street, so it does have low traffic, but yeah, we could move that down to Callis Street at that corner.
Is there a specific username that I've missed in all my?
No, you can skip that, it typically lets, lets you skip the username, or if you prefer to just verbalize your, your preference, that'd be okay as well.
I mean, I got the app, but I don't know, so.
Yeah, I got the app, but it's asking for a username.
Oh, that's, that's where you put in the half, half poles?
Yes, H-A-L-F-F, poles.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a username for you, but it's the username, I guess, of the group. So you would put H-A-L-F-F-P-O-L-L-S, half poles.
Got it, thank you for the help.
You're welcome, that's what I'm here for.
So, you know. So, obviously, you, you've been able to give us a lot of great feedback already, we're seeing where the voting is, so we've got eh, it's okay, and nah, not so much, that seems to be the leaders with concept A. So before we go on to concept B, particularly for those people that are voting C and D, is there anything else, any other suggestions or any other comments you wanted to lend us as we go back and, and continue to modify these initial ideas?
I looked ahead and I just like concept B better.
Well, why don't we go ahead then and, and close the poll, and Will and Aaron will introduce you to concept B then.
All right, concept B, let's take a look. I'm gonna go back a slide, don't want y'all looking ahead again. All right, concept B, so, so again, we're kind of creating that core activity, because, you know, there are three streets on three sides of it, but this is really creating a very formal ellipse where all of that activity is focused. It does have a large covered pavilion that has several picnic tables under it, you know, with barbecue grills, and it has separate ones for, you know, smaller activities, maybe it's just a, you know, small family gathering. But all of those playground activities are gonna be in that core ellipse, and it will be separated, you know, you'll have five to twelve-year-old equipment in one area, and you could have two to five playground equipment in another area, you know, one thing you might see at a typical neighborhood park is those, those different kinds of equipment intermingled, and, and there can sometimes be, you know, sort of a big kid running over a little kid kind of scenario, so if you separate those, you're not gonna have that issue, but it's, it's still gonna feel like one big area. This concept also does show sort of a fountain interactive feature type element right there in the center of the ellipse, that blue dot.
How old are your children?
I don't have children.
I could tell, because nobody would put a water feature between the two playgrounds. If you're gonna take kids of different ages, they're gonna end up in the water fountain.
Yep, yeah, and, you know, that's kind of the, the one middle ground where you might have them, but otherwise, you know, they'll be slightly separate. And, and, you know, of course, those can morph and change around that, that ellipse. The, the ellipse would be surrounded by that, that seat wall feature type again, sort of helping define that edge, providing seating that looks inward on the ellipse, and also seating that looks outward on the ellipse, if you were, you know, playing frisbee or catch, you know, on the edge. This does include the existing basketball court to remain in place. It need to be resurfaced and perhaps new nets, but otherwise, oh no, sorry, this is not an existing location, this would just be a whole new basketball court moved up towards the east side, up against that property line. There could be, similar to the last concept, enhanced parallel parking along Callis Street. There could be head-in parking on Baker Street, head-in parking is a little bit trickier, you know, with traffic, but because Baker Street is a dead-end street, thought maybe that could be an appropriate location for head-in parking. That could also be a potential location for that trailhead, which would have a different orientation, and still connecting you to that trail corridor. Again, this one was also showing that mid-block crossing, but that could easily move to the corner of Baker and Callis. Sort of that, heavier traffic is gonna be along Pleasant Green Drive, and so sort of framing that entrance, that sidewalk with maybe some sort of monumentation feature, something that says Martin Luther King Junior Park, maybe some enhanced vegetation, that could be a nice cornerstone for people driving through the neighborhood or looking, residents.
Can you speak more into the mic?
Yes, sorry, it keeps, when I point it up towards my face, it starts to slide down, so I'm just gonna hold it from now on. I think this sounds better too, huh?
It sure does.
Okay.
Wouldn't you want to put some lighting closer to the basketball court?
Well, that, that's a possibility, but if we're providing lighting for the basketball court, people will play later into the evening, and that could be a disturbance to the neighbors that are directly adjacent to the park, I'm not saying that's a no, but that's why we weren't specifically saying that it was a lit basketball court.
But it could always, you know, be added, it could be on timers, I mean, there's different elements that could be added if, if we wanted it lit to a certain timeframe.
Yeah, frequently in, in regional parks, we would, you know, propose lighting that at a certain hour it dims to thirty percent capacity, and, and that's really just like a safety level of lighting, but wouldn't provide glare on, you know, local residents.
Do we have a park curfew for any other park besides Riverside?
I think it's across the board, isn't it?
System-wide, is it eleven P M?
It's eleven, system-wide. I think it's system-wide, isn't it?
Yes. Okay.
And so currently it's what?
It's eleven o'clock.
There are some stipulations with Ethel Lee when it comes to the amphitheater,
but for the most part, it, it's consistent throughout.
And for a sense of scale, your two smaller sized pavilions, what, what are those? As far as what's underneath, you say pavilion with grills, but?
Something of that scale, you would see one to two picnic tables. The, the large one that's closer to the basketball court could hold three, potentially four.
So, the one issue I see then with this design, if someone decides they need to rent out one of the grills, the smaller ones, one of the smaller pavilions, you block off a lot of access into the center of the park.
That's true, yeah, so those are kind of right there on the edge where those corner sidewalk, where the sidewalks are coming from the corner, so maybe those could shift location, you know, towards like the, the end of the long end of the ellipse.
Yeah.
I think the basketball court should be on the west side where there's no houses.
Towards Callis Street?
No, towards Baker Street.
Towards Baker, okay.
Baker Street is on the west side.
Yeah, I guess the, the corner of, yeah, we're kind of looking north, north is sort of the left end of the screen. Well, yeah.
Also, if you have a basketball court, the sun's gonna shine east and west, and you want it to run the other direction, I would think. You don't want the sun in your eyes when you're playing basketball.
Jesus is the man.
You do, you do. That's right, you too, that's why I turned, that's why I turned around to look at Jeff, you're like, what, what is, never mind, I was just gonna use the term baller to describe, but what would a baller think of that?
I think that, that would be a good location by Baker because of the pool and parking too, I think some folks may come for the use of the basketball court.
Yeah, basketball court definitely draws a crowd.
Especially full court.
Right, and so there, there definitely, you know, when you have a basketball, and I'm assuming, you know, that takes place now, I know that Justin has been trying to get me out on the court at six A M, it's just way too early for me. But I know that people do go from different parts of town to, to play.
And also looking at these, the schematics, you have all the lighting towards Callis Street and no lighting back against the neighborhood, so, you know, the pavilion, I don't see any lighting anywhere around there, the, the bigger one, and again, you know, that leaves the court real dark.
Sure, yeah, yeah, again, the curfiers, you know, that, that's something we could definitely add lighting to the, the court itself. The pavilions can be lit themselves, it could be on timers too. And, and yeah, we, we're, I was trying to avoid lighting up against the residences, but if it's determined that we want to provide, you know, light, lights on timers, or, you know, solar lighting, or.
Probably the solar lighting. The yellow marks that are around the whole park, are those benches? Or where were the benches at, I was looking for the seat wall.
Oh, so the, the seat wall, so if you're looking at that ellipse, it's kind of a orangish pink color, that's, it's kind of that band, just on the outside of that.
Not the yellow?
Is it, is it yellow, I think it's a thin.
I see it yellow, I don't know if that's what you mean, to be the seat wall, 'cause.
You'll see a, a thin band that's.
A thin one, the real thin one, yes, okay.
So as opposed to being on the street in this design there around the ellipse?
Correct, yeah.
I like that idea better.
Is there any seating around the playgrounds?
Yeah, there, there could definitely be benches interspersed, that's, that's sort of a level of detail we haven't really reached yet, but yeah, absolutely, because, yeah, I mean, if, if we're only providing seating around the exterior of this thing, that's, parents want to be next to their kids when they're, I, I, I don't have kids, but I assume parents want to be next to their kids when they're on the play equipment, especially, you know, two to five years.
And I, and I mean, I know it was sarcastic and tongue-in-cheek, but I am serious about the locations of the playgrounds, because families, you know, they're not, our children are two to five, oh, now all of our children immediately are five to twelve, they're all in between, and so you, when one person takes multiple kids to the neighborhood park, they can't watch them with that much distance between, I'm, I'm not sure how much distance that is, but, and then if that water feature has any movement to it, there's gonna be lots of people there, and you're not gonna be able to see, I, I would seriously think about the location.
So out of curiosity, would, would it be more appropriate in your eyes to bring the two to five and five to twelve elements really together and keep, but still keep them slightly, you know, separated, just like that left half is two to five?
Yeah, I think that the children's park here in Victoria is kind of like that, you've got the smaller, kids are drawn to the smaller elements, but then as you move through, there are larger elements.
But still close proximity, and, and you can be seated in one area and see what's going on everywhere.
I'm still looking at the open space that, that goes around the, the oval. Well, then, then, then the basketball's here, and still around there, and I know you said people can play frisbee, throw a ball, I mean, that's still a lot of open space. I just, I see is there another use for possibly a portion of that that's very specific and still having plenty of space to throw a ball or throw a frisbee? I guess people still throw frisbees.
Yeah, like there, there could be, as mentioned before, like it's just a backstop, and, and the backstop doesn't necessit, or doesn't say this area can only be used for, yeah, baseball or softball practice, but we can throw a frisbee there, you know, that could be an element.
And, and I think, you know, are we trying to achieve, what's the goal, right? Is the goal or the desire to have more open space in this part of town for baseball? Right, 'cause if that's the goal, then we probably need to have a conversation about that, right? About, okay, well, where's the proximity to that, you know, where's Hopkins Park, you know, what's in Hopkins Park? Does there need to be more green space in this part of town to offer those amenities, right? Let's not forget that this is a neighborhood park, right, and so, you know, the last thing you want is, you know, barbecuing, you know, with your family and getting, you know, being worried about getting hit by a baseball, because, you know, somebody's batting from where you are, you know, and I'm over here barbecuing, right? And so we need to keep in mind the scale of the park, you know, it's not that very big.
Sure.
But since you've brought it up a couple of times, I mean, again, is a desire to look at more space for baseball?
I, I, I don't know what the total green space is gonna be used for, I want, I, I'd like it to be used. If we're gonna have a park in there, I'd like it to be used.
Yeah.
Versus, versus the city just mowing it.
Right, so, let's have a brief conversation then about just open space, right? Are, are, are we thinking that as we class, because this is gonna come up in every one of these conceptual plans? So are we thinking that when we suggest open space, that that is not a programmable space, right? Because we're not looking at it that way, right? I mean, as consultants, as staff, you know, when we think of open space, we think of it as being programmed as exactly that, right? And creating a, just a space for people to kick a soccer ball, throw a baseball, play a kite, you know, just go picnic. Just go set up shop, right, maybe it, it's an open space that allows staff to do a movie night, and you just pop up a screen, you know, on one end of the open space, and then people just go camp out, right?
So you're gonna do that in a neighborhood park or a community park?
Well, we could do both, right, I mean, depending on you, who you invite, but, but my point is, when we recommend an open space, that to us is a programmable feature. I guess that's my main point.
I think, well, if I, if I could just interject, I mean, if you, if you look at this park.
It's not, it's not that big.
It's not big at all.
I know.
And it, this is an intensive use of the, of the space that's there on this concept B. I think it's much more intensive than A. And there really isn't a lot of room to do a lot else in there, and if you, I, I think there should be some open space that's, you know, there for, for the purpose of just being green and pretty and making the neighborhood look nice, I mean, I think that's, I think that's kind of the concept we're talking about, you know? I think it's easier for me to think about these things as not designed, and, you know, you know, somebody's gonna be getting in the way of somebody else, but just concepts, concepts about how do you, how do you approach this park? I mean, we've been, we've, we've been out as a commission and looked at the parks and walked through them and talked about some of this, and I think particularly this one, the neighborhood, this is a good one to choose for a neighborhood park, I think, to, to get that concept, and Jan, you mentioned it too, you know, it was new to me as well, thinking about the parks in terms of their, their classifications, whether it's a neighborhood park, what's its purpose, it's really to serve people in that area who are gonna come there for a short period of time, and are gonna go home when they need to go to the bathroom, for example. There, it, it's, it's, that's the idea, when you get to the, to the other size park, you know, the regional park, of course, and the other, the neighborhood parks, or the middle size, what are those?
Community.
Community parks, then you really do, you know, more permanent uses for some of that open area, but, but this concept, frankly, if you go look at the park, it, it wouldn't have a whole lot of open space left in, under this concept, I wouldn't, I don't think, but.
Yeah, the way it looks on the paper right here, I'd say it looks like a lot, but I just took their little scale, I'm guessing is correct on the bottom right, and put it on the back of a page. You're talking fifty feet from Pleasant Green is where the ellipse starts on the right, and probably forty feet from the parking on the left. Yeah, that, probably not as much.
The scale didn't change.
Yeah, and that basketball court's not really the scale.
Closer to the roads, then that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so those playgrounds may be close enough after all.
Yes. Because it's a smaller.
I would like to add also, one of the things that even the first, or the second chapter of the plan talks about is park space programming, and we divide that into three categories, recreation space, everything in that ellipse is, most of that in that ellipse is recreationally programmed space. We talk about social space that might not have a play facility in it, but it's just a place to gather, and then to the point I think Jesus is making, we talk about natural space. And either that's natural space that's purposely left in a natural state, or it is maintained and manicured in a very minimal state. Expanding on the idea of that particular open space that's remaining in that particular park, yeah, it's, in, in this scenario, it would be space that has to be mowed at least, but oftentimes, we see communities overprogram these spaces, and if we put a backstop in or a soccer goal in, And if we put a backstop in or a soccer goal in, besides just having to mow that space now, over time, what we see when we go from community to community is now a backstop or a soccer goal, or the nets are falling down, or the chains rusted. And that's just other things for Jason and his staff to maintain that probably in a space like this just aren't going to get utilized to the degree that would warrant that degree of formality in adding those things. We've got, we've got one hour on the schedule and we've got four concepts to go. And we really want to respect your time and hit them as quickly as possible. Unless there's any other specific comments now on this, do you mind if we just go to the poll, just like we did on the last one? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try and switch gears here, go back to the presentation. So, same questions as before, you like it or you hate it? Not that simple, but yeah.
Well, yeah.
How do we get to B?
Mine's still on A.
How do we get to B?
Next slide.
No, on the app, how do you get to B?
There it is.
There we go.
It should be B now.
Got it.
Sorry about that, guys.
It's all you.
That is a promising start, because if this vote had gone like the first one would, Aaron would be on his own for the final four concepts.
Tell me what's wrong. The podium's on this side, not near the exit.
Yeah, not an exit, I already took note of that. All righty, well, we'll go ahead and close the poll, we've been taking notes on all of your comments. And, you know, when it comes to this park, all I can say is, we will continue working toward a concept that is much more preferred by a broader audience and blends not only the ideas that you may have liked from the one concept to the other, but also many of the ideas that you've generated with your comments.
One thought, the one element that I personally really do just think is good from the concept A is the connector to the bus stop and the connector to Callas Street. Because concept B doesn't have a direct connect from that side of the street, which is where people would park and where the bus would drop off, to the middle. So you would have people walking through the grass, which might be okay. But I mean, if we know that people are probably going to take that route, it might make sense to just program it as such. As opposed to making people go all the way to the right or to the left to catch the sidewalk. And so I think that's just food for thought. I have a question for the group, you know, had the concept A had a basketball court, do we think we would have liked it better?
No.
Nope.
It would improve it, I believe. Right.
I like B, I just, and I, everybody wants to make it real symmetrical, but if you slid it over a little bit and moved the basketball court, like you said, have a trail from the bus stop straight up.
And maybe a community garden or a space.
You could also move the fountain down where the landscaping is, the nine in the lower oval. And then you could open up, you could move two and three a little closer together.
Yeah.
So that, like Jan said, you can see both areas. You could have a shaded seating area in there where people, where grandfathers like me could then watch their kids from both angles.
Under those big beautiful trees there to go. So yeah, maybe rearrange some of those interior elements of the ellipse and, you know, move the basketball court.
You could make the ellipse a little bit bigger and move it to a side.
Yeah, just a little off center.
Doesn't have to be exactly in the center, it can be off center.
And there doesn't have to be that much space not used.
The other big change, you know, between those two is the, doing away with that existing parking that's there already right now, which if you, it really kind of felt to me like looking at it in its current state was kind of overkill, given the fact that you've got good parking along Callas Street and Baker Street. The head-in parking idea, I think is, I like that idea, and that was something you guys came up with as a, as a thought.
Well, also what we find is, like on Callas Street, a lot of people won't park on it because it's just a wide street. Even though you can park on it, a lot of people won't because it feels exposed. And so that's why both of these concepts propose the curb extensions to that lane of parking is defined. Well, we've done that in other communities, and continuously you'll see a lot more people utilizing that parking. It'll more than make up for the lot that's on the property right now.
But eliminating that parking lot gives you some more, gives you some more space to work with.
So we do want to actually ask you, you know, which one do you like better? And we'll go ahead and poll that.
We think we know the answer, but...
Where's combined?
If you had to choose.
And we understand this is just a poll, not an official vote of the city council. So if there's any media in the back there, this is not an official vote of the city council.
And we understand B has copyrights, things need to change on B. We'll never look at A again today. All right, a couple more seconds, see anyone else is pulling out? All right, so let's look at the north side of town, look at Ethelie Tracy's park. This is a community park, so it serves not just the immediate neighborhood around it, but also other neighborhoods and, you know, sort of the north part of Victoria. You'll notice that there's sort of that main driveway that comes down off of the road, and that sort of bisects the park. And then there's that circular drive area. It does have bays of parking on either side of that main road all along it. There's the amphitheater sort of on the southern end of the project, it does have a restroom and picnic pavilion. That's, if you're looking at it and you see Mickey Mouse like I do, it's sort of like center of the ears, that's your restroom and picnic pavilion. It does have the sand volleyball courts, there's horseshoe pits, there is a well-loved playground with plenty of shaded seating. There's basketball courts, there is also the splash pad. And you can definitely make this one out, there's the tennis court. Something you might not be able to see is, north of the tennis courts on the other side of the road, there are two backstops that face away from the road, and those can be utilized for baseball practice. There's also the pond on the south corner. And something you definitely can't see from this image is that there is a nine-hole disc golf course that is on the same side of the road as the tennis court.
Question, is that Glasgow or is that Plac de Venavides?
Uh, Glasgow.
It's Plac de Venavides.
It's Plac de Venavides.
It is. Kind of long O.
It's an honest mistake, I mean, it connects to it across Navarro, so... But, yeah, it is Plac de Venavides.
Which one do we write on the concept?
You were really close, you were just on the wrong side of Navarro.
Right. All right, so...
Really close, if wrong on a fifty-fifty question is close, but that's very generous.
Looking at this Tracy layout right here, one thing that I see is missing is like amphitheater seating. I thought we were going to put seating there, opposed to having folks sit on a hill.
It's the first time I've heard of this one, but that could be, you know, if this is going to be programmed for those types of events that need a lot of seating, that could be something that were added. It could be maybe limited towards like the front end where, you know, we have limited amount of seating. There's several rows in front of the stage rather than, you know, the whole slope.
Like seating that's built up on the hill, in the hill.
So like, like almost seat walls that are kind of retaining as they're providing seating?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, that's something you will not see in either of the concepts, but could be added to either of the concepts. But these are the items that, out of the survey data, you know, the frequency of which they were listed, you know, additional restroom is definitely needed. There were a lot of stories that the restroom is not close enough for my children to the playground. So that was a very high need, I forget the quantity of which it was mentioned, but it was mentioned many, many, many times. Additional playground space, while there is plenty of playground space already, it gets a lot of love. And there are, I read some of the colliding children comments. Trails that could, you know, serve the parents that are taking their kids to the park, that was mentioned. Performances at the amphitheater, and that's programming, but, you know, that might fall into the category of people who mentioned that, well, I didn't know anything was going on, you know, maybe, maybe that was just a programming thing, but maybe not. Additional covered picnic areas, dog park, traffic calming was a big one, you know, that road goes right by the playground and that might not be a great long-term. Security for lighting, perhaps a gate, even brush clearing and additional parking. And I think that additional parking comment was probably, additional parking, close to the elements, they get a lot of love. Not just additional parking, because there's parking all the way back up to the street. So let's look at concept A.
We could put an emphasis on that brush clearing at Tracy, on the disc golf course.
And I think that there has been some recent brush clearing up along the street, yeah, maybe some additional selective clearing along the disc golf course. So here we are, let's look at preliminary concept A. And it generally keeps kind of that same road alignment through the park, but as we approach the location where the existing playground is, we're going to pull that road away and provide some space so that there's not, you know, vehicles that could be traveling at a high speed, not that they should. But providing a buffer, putting that parking lot between the road and the park, and the playground elements. And also providing, you know, some green space between that parking lot and those playground elements. This one you might not like when you see that the two to five and five to twelve could be so far apart. Maybe in reality, you know, once we start dialing in this design, those move a little bit closer to each other. There's additional covered picnic tables in that area with five and six and C and D, that's the playground area. D is the existing splash pad, there's the potential that that could be expanded, there were comments that, you know, we want more splash pad. So maybe, you know, that could expand away from the playground and away from the parking lot. We have preserved the backstops, but we've moved them a little bit closer together. There was a large gap between those backstops and it was unnecessary, so moved those together, kind of pushed them a little further away from that playground area, but not trying to take elements away from the park, just put them together and move them a little further away. The roadway, as it approaches the sort of furthest from the street that you can get, towards the restroom and pavilion picnic area, we've removed some of the bays of parking. And we've also added parking islands. Right now, you've got this very wide swath of pavement that makes this big circle. We've read stories and heard, you know, firsthand accounts of how some people like to maybe get their vehicle going sideways through there. So by adding these parking islands, we're able to limit, you know, that kind of movement. We would be preserving the sand volleyball court in its existing location. Throughout the park, you'll notice like yellow lines, and those are all trails. And that's really just providing a great trail network where people could get in loops for exercise or just, you know, enjoying the park and kind of meandering along some of that, those trees and brush.
When you say trail, is that like a dirt trail, crushed gravel, cement?
It could be, it could be both, maybe a paved trail with a side path to it that were decomposed granite. Perhaps joggers prefer to run on that surface. It could be just paved, or some could be paved and some could be decomposed granite. I think in this concept, we're just considering only paved, but...
Like a sidewalk?
Yeah, just, yeah, sidewalk, it could be six feet wide, eight feet wide, would allow a little bit more travel.
Yeah, but either way, it would intend to be just an internal loop within the park, it's just another internal facility.
So we preserved the tennis courts in their existing location too. And because of the enhancements and expansion to the playground area, we, you know, we ended up removing the basketball courts that are there. Because that's a utilized feature in the park, we needed to relocate it. So we put those over by the tennis courts, thinking, well, there's already plenty of parking up there. So what if we preserve that parking and put the basketball court next to the tennis court? If there's, you know, if those are lit, those are, you know, rather than having bright lighting in multiple places in the park, maybe those are more in one location. We do have a pedestrian promenade that kind of wraps around the amphitheater area. And that would be, you know, a wide, wide sidewalk that would be tree-lined and would allow for vehicles to drive on, it would be gated. But those vehicles could be serving amphitheater, they could be setting up equipment. We thought that it'd be a great idea to allow access to the backside of the pavilion for vehicles, but that needs to be controlled. There would be, many of the comments that we saw were making the pond a constant level. Right now, it feature, it functions as a detention facility, but keeping that water level at a same, same level year-round was brought up in providing water features that could, could one, they would look nice, but they would also provide, help, you know, for fishing. They'd be aerating the water, and that was another comment that we saw a lot of. So you'll see a couple, or you'll see a fishing pier that is in this concept. Along those trails, you'll notice maybe some red dots, and those would be exercise stations. And there would also be additional covered pavilions and picnic tables spread throughout, along the pond and trails.
Is there room in either of these concepts to do any type of extension on the rear of the stage?
There is, yeah, and actually I forgot to mention that. But there's been, there's been comments about having sort of a secured storage facility with that, with the amphitheater, and also a place to change, you know, changing room, if there were a theater event happening, they need space to do that. But yeah, also secured storage space for props. So that could expand either behind the existing theater or to either side of the... It's also, one of the, one of the things that you noticed in the original concept, it was just one way in and one way out, you had that loop at the end, but that was it. So this concept does provide secondary access out to the main road. That could also provide access to future development on the south side of the park. They could have driveways that could be gated or could be open. But that would allow the developer to, you know, kind of face the park. If that were some sort of road that were not gated, you know, residences could face the park.
In this concept A, is your basketball court on top of the disc golf course? Because the disc golf course is not mapped out here.
Correct, yeah, this one's saying that maybe, maybe the disc golf course goes away because the placement of that basketball court did really impede, you know, the area that it was using. Could still maybe rearrange some of the holes if that made concept A more appealing.
There's not a lot of room there to do that.
Yep. Yeah, preserving this part of the existing alignment of the road, it does make for some difficult areas to program in this concept.
And what's number three, is that just open space?
Three would be the two existing backstops that have been pushed together a little bit closer. But yeah, the green blobby area would be open space. So... Let's get your initial thoughts on concept A for Ethelie Tracy.
Is there enough space to move B and the basketball courts further, I guess, towards the amphitheater and maintain the disc golf course?
Perhaps, yeah, or, you know, maybe the basketball courts went up closer to the backstops. We could definitely, because that area is, we're not really, aside from taking away area from the disc golf course for the basketball, we're not taking away that much, so maybe the, just the basketball courts get relocated on site.
I'd like to see the, just from experience going out there, there's always this element where the family's kind of utilizing the whole facility. Perhaps the father may be playing basketball and the kids running back and forth from the park. Perhaps the, the father may be playing basketball and the kids running back and forth from the park. And with that basketball court closer to the park, they're able to kind of all play together without being so separated. Whereas if the basketball court's way over there, the family might have to be separated or maybe the, the father or mother may decide just not to play basketball at all because it's so far away. That's just a thought.
That's just more space for us.
Well, and I, I think keeping the basketball court on that side of the park away from the residences, I, I agree with some of this discussion about moving it. To, maybe the basketball could be closer to the amphitheater and then be, I don't know, fit on the other side along with the backstops.
Yeah, maybe there were more road rearrangement to, to allow those items to go together, but, but not be pushing it up against the neighborhood.
How many acres is this park?
Is it thirty-three? Thirty-something, I think, wasn't it?
About thirty acres.
Thirty-two acres or something like that.
So initial feedback, how do y'all feel about concept A? As it could, not sure.
I could tell you simply just from experience, living at the Duke Apartments for my first year in town, that I think the trails, I think, are huge. Because there was plenty of times that we would try and, you know, go for a walk or whatever and it was, there was just, you know, not many options. I mean, the closest you got was walking in the parking lot, walking around the amphitheater and that's it. And so I think that would be huge, you know. When we take into account the, the density of how many people live within walking distance to this park, I think those elements will be more utilized. And I think we can't dismiss that aspect of it. I know that we're talking about it from a community park standpoint because it's larger, but for the people who live at the apartment complex or for the people that live, you know, in the neighborhood, literally right next door to it, this is their neighborhood park as well, right? And so I think those trails, I think, are a huge asset.
Are there additional bathrooms on this plan?
Yes, sorry, I completely whiffed on that one. Yes, there would be a restroom facility serving that, that playground area with the splash pad.
Label that number seven, I think. And in terms of the breakdown of the parking lot too, it floods really easily right now. So even just after a small rain of some kind, people aren't using the parking lot in its current configuration anyway because you can't. So I think changing it, I think, makes sense. And I witnessed myself people doing donuts there, so. Wasn't me at prom.
All right, so we got your initial feedback on A. Let's, let's go and take a look at, at B. And, and right off the bat, you're going to notice, we, we just said, who cares about the existing road? Let's, let's see what this park could really be if we, we took that existing road out and created a new condition. So by pushing that road, when it parallels, you know, the, the length of the park, by pushing that closer to the property line and then kind of bisecting the park, we haven't created those narrow areas that are difficult to program. With this concept also would potentially, it proposes having a little bit of expansion to the property to the south. If there could be a small property acquisition, a road could be provided there. And that, that would be a great incentive perhaps to a developer who says, well, you know, maybe there's cost sharing here. And now, you know, there's a higher market value for these particular parcels because they front a park. And any of that connectivity, it could expand, you know, throughout their development. This, this concept does preserve the disc golf course, is nine holes still, and generally in the same area that it exists. We've taken the backstops and put them together and pushed them a little bit further away and reoriented them. There is a dog park in this concept, which is item number five, sort of that light green square rectangle. The tennis courts are remaining in their existing location. And there would be additional parking that we provided, items seven, which are on both sides of that central road through the park. B is the sand volleyball court. So we're suggesting that that can be moved over towards, you know, sort of this court area where we've got the tennis courts, the sand volleyball court and the basketball courts. Since the basketball courts were removed, again, in this concept, from the playground structures. The playground structures are that nine and 10. So they'd be serviced by that large parking lots and there'd be that splash pad relocated with that playground. There'd be a large promenade that kind of circumnavigates all of that area. It kind of brings the pavilion and the playground area and makes it all one large node.
Did you say splash pad relocated?
Correct.
So can the existing splash pad actually be relocated?
The, some of the equipment might be able to, but primarily no, it's, it's a.
It's almost brand new.
Yes. So pump house included. But it would have that pedestrian promenade that kind of brings all the items together. Right off of that pedestrian promenade towards the lake would be additional fishing piers. And, and one thing that we're suggesting here too is that maybe on the south end by the Duke of Victoria, that, there could be a trail corridor that could take people to, towards the mall. You know, it could provide that additional connectivity towards the future development in that area and provide that connectivity. In this concept, you're also going to see that we haven't proposed an additional restroom facility, but it is using the existing one that is currently in the park. So with B in mind.
I did speak to the developer to the south, the property owner, and he is interested in providing property. That's good, yeah.
A couple of things on this B. And I think they're too small to really see, shade structures, grills, picnic tables. Maybe that number two represents that, I think. With this one, the parking gets pushed away from the amphitheater. And I don't know, Dr. Young at the Frozen, what did they do for concessions?
It was down by E, by the restroom picnic pavilion.
So in this way, you wouldn't be able to get anything over there, right? So I would suggest if we, you know, wanted to follow this, that there'd be some way to park a food truck or a concession trailer or something closer to the audience.
Something we've done recently in another community's park is along that promenade, you know, that could be designed to support vehicular loads. And you could bring like food trucks in and vendors and, and have, you know, outlets for them to plug into and provide power. But, you know, that could be brought in for special events. You know, it could be along the playground, it could be along the, along the backside of the amphitheater or anywhere really along that, that whole promenade could provide power for that.
Around, looking at the amphitheater in B concept, you've got kind of an eyeball shape instead of a circle for the big green area. And there are some white lines that are currently the sidewalk, I think. Are those white lines still in play there or are they just to show us where it was?
Those, those would not still be in play in this concept, they would be removed.
So the visual sight, line of sight for the amphitheater is wider?
Correct.
And so I'll say I like the programming better on this one, but I'm also worried about the cost of relocating the splash pad. It might make this whole thing just totally cost prohibitive to even consider it.
Well, and the cost of relocating the road, right?
The road seems like a big deal too, but the road makes a huge difference in the two plans. Roads are cheap.
Don't say that out loud, people will believe you.
It's a joke.
Smart pad.
But I really like the road in B. I, I think it makes a big difference.
It does.
Really opens it up.
It does. And you can add more things to the park.
And that really eliminates the issue off of Sequoia that we had concerns with from those residents. And then really kind of focuses the parking lot for the playscapes into one general area versus having that just, just drive-through, if you will, so you don't have as much, hopefully, high, high speeding traffic that comes through. Not that we'd like that anyway in the park, but it would be less with that, with that design.
That's really true. After Frozen, a lot of people went from the show to the playground and were having to dart across the traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and in both concepts, as Aaron's pointed out, we're trying to create additional ingress and egress. So particularly during those event days, you're better able to move traffic. But that's also why this concept has the proposed trail extension to the south of the apartments that could take you perhaps to the back of the parking lot by the movie theater. And that, people could access the park just by walking from that parking lot as well. And that would, that would help ease some of the concerns about capacity during peak events.
Hundred percent, really? So if you wouldn't mind, yeah, go ahead and use, use the app to provide your initial feedback. How do you feel about this concept B?
People can always park on Glasgow.
And walk.
It's a long walk, yeah.
Boy, I wish we had frozen the poll at that one hundred percent, but, but then reality set in.
Anyone else?
I think we need to just think about how to, you know, kind of marry some of these concepts.
Together.
Yeah, together, right. So that it's not such a huge, get rid of everything the way that it is now, right? And kind of marry some of that.
Yeah, and I, and I would just read.
Because if, for example, like on concept A, you know, let's say for argument's sake that the developer is interested in expanding a little bit, then maybe that provides an opportunity to bring back, you know, the disc golf course, you know, in that concept at that point. So, I mean, there, there could be opportunities there just in general to kind of think through.
And you could take the playgrounds and put them in that horseshoe area, kind of in the area where they are on B, and maybe keep some of that road. So C, D, five, six, you know, move that over.
We also, of course, recognize, you're just being introduced these concepts this evening. So we'll talk afterward with you, Jesus and Mike, about how we might be able to get additional comments from, from all of you following this evening's meeting. We don't pretend that this is all the comment we'll receive. We certainly want to take some more time to get additional feedback from everybody.
Also, taking away that road is going to take away accessibility for like seniors and handicap people that are going to be forced to get out of their car to go and see the lake, opposed to now where they can drive through and observe the park.
I was thinking the same thing. Accessibility to the lake for maybe older people or perhaps people toting things who want to go to that pier and fish.
Yeah, maybe there would be some, like additional small parking lot, you know, to the north end of that lake where there's the number sixteen.
Or by sixteen, by sixteen, you could put a pier and a widening of the road.
Yeah, yeah, that, that road could even maybe shift a little bit further away to provide adequate space for that. So we're going to ask you again, which one do you like better between A and B for Ethelie Tracy?
It's like a trick question.
There is a D. I hope this is helpful at, you know, at minimum to be able to distinguish, you know, just the difference between neighborhood park and some of the larger parks and how you think about programming and parking and amenities and things of that sort. Because I think that's important. And the other thing too to keep in mind, and we probably should have mentioned this early on, is that, you know, simply because the plan itself is only looking at these three parks, doesn't mean that as staff or as council, we don't have all the other parks to think about, right? So for example, you know, Hopkins Park, right? There's actually a big chunk of land that's owned by the school district that touches Hopkins Park where, you know, if there was a desire to have, you know, more of these types of amenities that exist in Ethelie Tracy somewhere else on the south side, you know, we could talk about Hopkins Park and how we program that, right? And so we're not necessarily suggesting that, you know, we're only going to hit on these three parks. But this is a good exercise simply to understand, you know, again, what you put in neighborhood parks, what their purpose is in some of the larger parks. And when we talk about, you know, an implementation sort of schedule, if you will, you know, we as staff, you know, will have to take into account, you know, all of the parks, you know, not just, you know, the conceptually designed parks. And so just keep that in mind, you know, we're, we're utilizing these as simply just as an example to then kind of hopefully replicate some of those principles in other neighborhood parks and other community parks, you know, things of that sort.
All right, so let's look at the last, but definitely not the least park this evening. We're going to look at Riverside Park.
This will probably be the shortest conversation.
Saving the best for last.
Two for two, you're two for two.
All right, so it's huge, right? Five hundred acres. A large portion of that is, is the golf course. Almost the whole park is in the floodplain. The area that's not in the floodplain is where the current Parks and Rec Office is located, the children's park, the, the all abilities, baseball facilities. There's four miles of river access, but there's, you can't really see the river all that much. Especially when you're driving through, there's many times you have no idea the river's right there. It's just, there's just a wall of trees, right? And there's a pretty good grade change really between that, that high ground where the park's office is and everything else. One of, one of the problems we do want to point out too is that, you know, the vehicular access does bisect the neighborhood when you're coming in off of Main. So you're driving through that one block of residential housing just to get to the park on the north end. So listed in order frequency, again, these are the items that we saw in survey feedback. Dog park came in roaring at number one. People really want to see a dog park in Riverside. Amphitheater and event space, they want to see an amphitheater and event space there. It just talks about, you know, we can have music festivals, other types of festivals. Updating and expanding the playgrounds where they currently lie, as mentioned frequently. A splash pad, which does not currently exist. Having facilities along the river that cater to all those river activities, whether it's, you know, facilities to get in and out of the water if you're tubing or kayaking or canoeing. Also, you know, fishing, like a place to stand and fish. Concessions and food trucks was mentioned, as well as a large covered pavilions and picnic facilities. Trails was brought up quite regularly. There is an existing network of trails, but enhancing that and expanding that and, you know, allowing connectivity to adjacent uses for Riverside Park. Updating and adding restrooms and then basketball and tennis courts and other sports courts of that nature. So let's look at A. All right, so concept A is, the, the core of activities here is suggested on the orange area by the zoo. So the zoo is L, which is kind of a turquoise color. Twelve, eleven, ten, twenty-one, that, that's kind of a core of activities. We're, we're suggesting that there could be a large playground facility in this area as well. as well as a splash pad and lots of covered pavilions and seating. And thirteen is even concessions and food trucks that would cater to all of those uses as well as the soccer fields that will be going in off of Red River. There could be, oh, let me explain that. Because this is such a large park and we can only fit so much on this sheet, the level of detail is not quite as dialed in. Once we have sort of the elements that we prefer to see, their spatial arrangement and their relationships between each other, we can, we will start narrowing in that detail of like, you know, these are actual pavilions because we're not showing individual pavilion locations at this scale. So we've got that core of activity over by the zoo. We've talked about putting an amphitheater over by the baseball stadium. You'll see number nineteen, that would be an amphitheater. It's put there in this concept to use the parking that currently services the baseball stadium. And there would have to be, you know, conversations about programming so that a festival is not occurring at the same time as a baseball game. This concept, in fact, both concepts this evening, you'll see both Grover's Bend and Fox's Bend are remaining largely unprogrammed. Those are more passive uses, you know, you're going to see more frequent flooding in those locations. But allowing that narrow corridor to really function is like, you know, this is part of the river part of the park and allowing those passive uses to occur there.
Actually, there's a disc golf course in Fox's Bend.
Correct, yeah.
It's not slated on the map.
So seventeen is what we-
It's a brand new disc golf course, too.
Yeah, it extends all the way to the end of Fox's Bend now. Eighteen would have, sorry, eighteen would have sports courts that were located there, also near the existing parking lot for Riverside Stadium. Nine is suggesting bringing back the Equestrian facilities that were previously included in Riverside Park. To the north side of Riverside Stadium, you'll see eight, and that would be a dog park, which was the number one mentioned item in our survey responses. If you move north towards Grover's Bend, it would be preserving the duck pond, which we understand is being redesigned at this time. M is the existing, they're brand new right now, the new playground. And there's an existing restroom in that location. Seven would be suggesting that there could be primitive camping. And that would be, you know, not bringing in like RVs and type stuff, but it could be a little overnight facility for families to, you know, like introduce their kids to camping. And, you know, that area could be, Grover's Bend could be kind of gated off from the rest of the park at a certain hour to allow that kind of activity. Pebble Beach is to remain, we could provide additional parking for that. You'll notice at the tip of Grover's Bend, the tip of Fox's Bend, and also twenty-three at the very south end of the park, we do have these enhanced takeout facilities, which would be probably a dock or some sort of system to allow people to get out of the river safely and, you know, in a stable condition.
Your point at the end of Fox's Bend on your taking, talking about putting an out there for a kayak, it's, you're going to go up a huge cliff and then you've got about a two-hundred yard track to the road. It's really not ideal.
Along Grover's?
Actually, on, well, on both of your points, there's no roads there. It's just a river bend with a beach.
Yeah, the access to vehicles would be substantially more than, you know, at item twenty-three at the very south end of the park where that takeout, there's an existing takeout facility, but that would need to be improved. You also notice a three at the very north end of the park, and that would be the existing boat ramp. And that would be enhanced to allow for better flow of vehicles and parkings. Some people, you know, bring trailer boats and allowing for vehicles to park with trailers and not block the flow of traffic or block anybody into the parking lot. This does suggest that the backstops that are on the north side of Magnolia Avenue or once you get into the park of McRight, reorienting those baseball fields and allowing for a more cohesive parking that is separated from the main road.
You know, something that I think we're missing on this Riverside map too, like on spot number thirteen, that's the old convention center, you have it marked as a food truck area. We really need that convention center back. And I didn't realize how much until I tried to host an event at Riverside Park and we had an Arctic Blast come in. And it really threw a wrench in an entire event. But if we would have had, well, if we would have had the convention center, it would have been much better. But still, if you have an Arctic Blast, you have to end your event because of the frozen roads and all. But having that convention center there, having the music events that we used to have there, there used to be dances there, bands, people would rent that hall. And just having a convention center, we really need a convention center at Riverside Park. Otherwise, you're looking at in the future like, disc golf is growing by leaps and bounds in this town. And soon to be, usually when we have a disc golf tournament, we host it at the Lions Club Pavilion. This last tournament, we hosted three hundred players. And we're like fixing to outgrow the Lions Club Pavilion. So needing a convention center, it would just be, otherwise, you're looking at moving events like disc golf tournaments to headquarters at another location, which I don't know where that is because everyone likes to stay in the park. So I'm really starting to miss the convention center.
Would a covered pavilion is not the same thing, but would that be able to be utilized in that way? I mean, it's just a question of money.
Well, the convention center, having those four walls there and you're able to secure your people, so it would allow to like have, like flea markets and vendors come in when you have bigger events so that the vendors could set up in that convention center and you can have your headquarters. You could have food, concessions, everything in that convention center. Your catering, you know, so it's, yeah. I didn't know that we needed it until I got stuck with an event outside. And I'm like, God, we really need that, so.
Well, of course, when we had it, it wasn't a city property, it was privately owned. And there's a big difference.
So it's city-owned now?
City owns the slab now.
Yes, well, I think it would behoove us to look at bringing that back.
I'm not familiar with the previous convention center. Was there, what was the reason it was removed? Was it damaged or just-
Collapinated.
I think the hurricane got it or something like that.
No, I think the individual that owned the property, you know, he financially couldn't afford it, so it went to different hands. And after that, everybody, I mean, just let it go.
Probably damaged by floods.
Yeah, flooded, but basically financially, the individual, while he passed away, first of all, and his sons took over and they just financially were unable to maintain that Riverside Center.
I think what you'll see is, once you've seen both concepts, by and large, understanding that the vast majority of this park is in a floodplain, by and large, we're making recommendations for new structures, but not necessarily enclosed buildings for the most part. So I think in both concepts, we would shy away from using Riverside Park as a location for some major convention center type facility.
And one of the things really quickly for the benefit of, I guess, a reminder to council and maybe as a good FYI for the Parks Commission is that there's also a distinction between floodplain and floodway when FEMA releases their maps. And the restrictions that go as it relates to building a structure in a floodplain versus a floodway are completely different. Floodway is much more restrictive, it's much harder to build something in the floodway. And in the most recent FEMA maps, they've expanded the floodway. So, for example, the area where the old convention center site was, that's now a slab, didn't used to be in the floodway and was simply in the floodplain, now it's in the floodway. And so there are some elements there that make it very difficult to build structures in the park. And so it might not, maybe not have been the case, you know, decades ago, but it certainly is very restrictive now. So that's part of the reason why we're trying to keep it as green as possible.
And let me remind everyone that because of the new soccer fields and the tournaments that are coming and the hundreds of people that are going to be using the new soccer field, we favored a food truck area there to feed a lot of the people who are going to be there for three days for tournaments throughout the year. And that's why we favored the food truck area there for, to feed all the people that are coming for those soccer tournaments.
The food truck idea was kind of spearheaded by me, I guess, to some degree. I'm in the park all the time and we have lots of people that come down there. And one of the things that I hear the most is we like to grab by to eat, but Pump House is not always open or they're not in clothing where they want to go to a nice restaurant. And so there's not a lot of food options. And then also, as I was going around about town last year, I noticed that the food trucks kept moving. And so I started to speak to the food vendors and they keep getting relocated because the properties that they sit on keeps getting sold. So there's not a place in Victoria where the food trucks can just be established at one place. And also, since it is in a flood zone, that's something that somebody can move and take home, you know, when we're having a hurricane or, you know, when we're pre-warned about these bad weather, that we can move those things. And then it also gives us, you know, an opportunity for all types of restaurants. I mean, different catering companies, I mean, you can go get crawfish or you can have a hot dog or you can have Mexican food or you can go eat at the Pump House. Because I think even Pump House would probably bring in a catering truck. And so it just, it's a large enough slab to allow for several food trucks. And it's kind of perfect, I mean, it's pretty palm trees right there and then spread out throughout. You can just lay out picnic tables. And so it seemed like we were trying to bring more life to that particular area. And so we were thinking that would, that would give all of those patrons, you know, that go to soccer games or go to general stadiums, they have lots of opportunities of different places that they could eat at. And then they get to choose. And then, I mean, we all have that, you know, concert venue pavilion and then, you know, everybody can get a snack or a drink or whatever and have lots of options. And then, and it's revenue because you'll rent it.
Exactly, I have to agree with you.
Well, and to answer that question on the food trucks, I know that we've had several events where I think Mark Martinez and J.R. Pettis have brought food truck events here to the park. And, you know, being there is very successful. So I think if we decide to go that route, I think that Mark Martinez would be a person to talk to because he had contacted a lot of the food vendors that came down. And like you said, funnel cakes, all kinds of cheese, all kinds of foods that were prepared in that event.
Folks, I do want to point out, it's currently seven fifty-three, so I hope you all will build and indulge us and stay a little over.
I have a major concern right here. With your items number ten, eleven, and twelve, all of these are on the footprint of the most iconic, one of the most iconic disc golf courses in Texas. This is a course that's been in Victoria for thirty-eight years. And it's the reason why people come to Victoria to play disc golf. Not just on a tournament, but every single day. So trying to step on that green space right there, I think would be a huge mistake. It would kill disc golf in Victoria.
Do you think-
Something that we've been building for a very long time.
Right this area, by the zoo.
Ten, eleven, and twelve on this map right here.
So if perhaps that disc golf, if that area were taken for these activities, do you think it would be appropriate if we expanded disc golf throughout the rest of Fox's Bend?
I would highly recommend to never change this course because it's a John Howe course. John Howe is like a world famous disc golf designer.
Adam and Wimberly.
It was the third course he ever designed, so.
He designed the signs too, didn't he?
Say what?
He designed the signs to you, didn't he, on the course?
No.
No, he didn't?
No, actually, I designed those.
I don't think we need a splash pad in Riverside Park.
And aren't we ready to getting a splash pad in between, right across from the Parks Office, right now?
It's been discussed for it to be there, but nothing was ever decided by anybody. We have some funding allocated for a splash pad.
I thought it was paid for.
Yeah, we do have funding that has been allocated for a splash pad, but in terms of a specific site or how big is it going to be or how small, I mean, none of those details have been figured out. We were intentionally waiting for this process to kind of have a better idea because the last thing we wanted to do was, you know, invest, you know, those hundreds of thousands of dollars in an area to then be like, yeah, that's not where it makes sense because we want to actually think intentionally about where we lay out amenities. Because one of the struggles or challenges right now with Riverside Park is that everything's spread out. So it makes it very difficult for somebody that wants to take advantage of all the amenities to say park in one or two areas and then, you know, walk around. It just makes it very difficult. You know, if you've visited any large park in another, you know, community, you know, it can be very easy to park in one place or two places and just take trails and go hit that and then hit that and then hit that. And right now, it's just very, that connectivity within the park is very difficult. So we wanted to just be intentional with the programming aspect of it.
I thought across from the Parks Office was a good location for that splash pad. But we have so many splash pads in Victoria and the age group that they serve is so, five and under for me. I try to take an older child there and they're like, take me to Splashway.
Yeah, we're kind of missing that middle range of youth and activities for them.
Yes, and actually, I had someone suggest that maybe a skateboard park could be good too by the Parks Office at Riverside, so that you could have a children's playground on one side and kids could go skate. And then if you were going to have that splash pad in between the challenge field and the kids' park, then parents could like hang out right there and you could still see your kids all around you. And everybody wouldn't be so far away, so.
I vote on Nixon, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And they're missing the long there.
The sand volleyball courts have disappeared.
Uh, this could still be located by eighteen, that shouldn't necessarily exclude sand volleyball.
Actually, eighteen is on the iconic disc golf course. We really need to map out the Howe course. It wraps around from the zoo behind the baseball fields. It's a really big deal in Riverside Park. If you go through our park any day, you'll see the primary play at Riverside is disc golf.
I don't understand how this amphitheater works. It doesn't make sense to me. And I'm wondering about nine, the Equestrian, whether it's going to get any use. It's right there by the baseball stadium where there's loudspeakers. And I'm just wondering if the amphitheater could move over there or... I don't understand how it works with the parking lot. You come from the parking lot to the back of the amphitheater and walk around to the front.
Yeah, we did orient it that way, just to have, you know, the stage would be on the east side. So if it were like an evening festival, you know, the audience wouldn't be looking at the sun. But also the access to that parking lot for setting up the stage wouldn't be quite as far. There could be improved facilities, you know, allowing a driveway that could be gated off to access that amphitheater. But also allowing all of the crowd and stuff just to continue to spill out in that area as you go towards Fox's Bend.
And while I think we need an Equestrian area somewhere, that spot's too small. We've all seen it before.
Too small.
You can't pull horse trailers in there, there's no place to go park. There's just, it's not the right location for it.
I thought that place was designated for a future dog park.
It was, at one time.
At one point it was.
Yes.
I had a question about seven's primitive camping sites. We don't even allow camping in the park. We fought hard from the council to do that. And I understand if there's Texas Department of Wildlife and we're focusing on stuff, but there's a mixed message there.
If you were going to do camping in Riverside, I think the Grover's Bend area, like further across the street where six is, like in that big where it says Grover's Bend, I think that would be a more ideal area. And two, Fox's Bend has always been like a dream place to have campsites.
Jason, where do y'all set up for y'all's movie night and camping?
So this is going to be in the Grover's Bend area. Yes, sir, by the pavilion, the large pavilion.
Okay, so on that left side?
Kind of where it says Grover's Bend.
Yeah.
Between six and Q, kind of.
You can also block off the road there so that way it can close at certain hours, I think they said. And you'd have to use a code or something. Can you talk about that?
Could be a camp host even.
Yeah, we have some, we have some yellow gates that we can basically close off right between the pavilion at Q and then M right there.
And if we wanted to establish camping at Riverside, could we pull some water and maybe electric to have some water electric sites instead of just primitive? Or if we're going to have primitive, we need a shower house- Or if we're gonna have primitive, we need a shower house somewhere. The forbidden shower house. But it kinda goes with parks, you know?
Yeah, one of the things that's interesting about this conversation is that, you know, even though we think of Riverside Park as being our largest park, it's really very difficult to program it with elements. Uh, once you start, you know, just realizing how everything is laid out. So that's, I think that unfortunately, I think is gonna lead to a conversation about what exactly do we want Riverside Park to be? And what do we wanna prioritize, right? Do we want it to be a destination park? Do we want it centered around, you know, say some type of, um, sports tourism or, or simply just focus on the river, right? I mean, is this truly the best place, you know, to have all of these elements? You know, maybe, maybe not, irregardless of what, or regardless of what people... My wife told me the other day I shouldn't use the word irregardless, by the way. She said it doesn't exist. I said, I learned it in Brownsville. She said it doesn't exist. But anyways, but regardless of, um, of what people would like to see at the park, you know, there's just not enough space to really capture everything, right? Um, I agree that disc golf is, is an under, uh, maybe if I can use the word, underappreciated, um, you know, asset in our sports tourism, um, approach that people don't realize how many hundreds of people actually come in to use it, use those amenities. And so I think I would agree that we should leave those as intact as possible. And I think both plans actually kind of eliminate some aspects of them. Um, and so I just think we need to probably retake a look at that.
In, in essence to what, uh, Councilman Bockenau said, uh, I feel like number nine can be moved to number eight. Being that number eight used to be a Horseman Arena. And that would be ample space for what he's talking about, moving the trailers and having something that, uh, feasible for, for what, you know, we plan to do there, number nine.
Number eight is a beautiful green space behind the ballfields.
Yeah, remember it used to be a, an arena.
I think that was before my time.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say, I'd really love to see that existing children's park when you first enter be improved or, uh, updated somewhat. Uh, you know, it has that basketball court there and then the, the, the really open concept of the parks. Um, you, you know, they're separate for the age groups, but still close together. And that's just, uh, it's really beautiful there. And I just, uh, are at the least repainted or re, you know, just beautified, I guess.
Yeah, there's a lot of nostalgia.
That children's park is amazing, you know? I hadn't visited in a long time, but I've kind of been researching playgrounds here lately. And, um, that playground is really cool. Um, it has lots of amenities.
And there's, there's a little bit of space, not a lot, but there's a little bit of space in between R and C that I don't know if that's programmable space, you know, for something else up there. And kind of focus some of those amenities, you know, kind of in that area.
I do believe there's, there is a historic aspect to that area. There's an old, uh, mission or fort.
I think that's a cultural side. I don't think you could do anything on that.
Got it.
Right. There's a big space between D-
And Dr. Shook was here to make sure that we did it, by the way. And I know he left, but I'm sure he'd appreciate y'all correcting me on that.
There's a big space between D and K. If you're looking for amenities.
The A, the nature trail. Alright.
You had me looking.
Can that area be developed or what is up with that area?
That's why, why, why not? I mean, you can still keep elements of the nature and preserve area, but there's, if you're looking at actual space you can use, the golf course takes up so much of that space, right? If I had to do it all over, looking at it right now, golf course would be up against Vine Street. You know, and then you would have the programmable space down lower. But as we move up towards the nature trail area, it's less of a flood plain, right, or floodway?
Right.
But I don't know if there's anything that fits within that like Horseman's Arena. If that's something that we really wanna have.
And isn't there a birding area that's gonna be developed there somewhere in that nature trail area?
We got an RV park right there.
No, I thought the Tourism Bureau was working on, Joel was working on a, a birding feature with lots of birding stuff.
That's more, yeah, it's more along the trail and, and also behind the-
Hiller's Hill or Hiller's House.
But I'm just saying, if you, you know, if you're looking at all options are open for doing something with Riverside Park, you've probably left out, I don't know, a hundred and eighty acres?
I mean, the things that I've always wanted in Riverside Park is river access. I wanna be able to go sit on a bench and look at the river and I wanna be able to get in the river. And things that I've discussed, um, that we're not having on these maps is like a designated tubing trail. I have one mapped out that's really easy and it, it's, it focuses on Grover's Bend. And there's like three access points you could get in, starting, um, a little ways down from the boat dock. You have that first parking lot, that could be your first get in. And then at the top of, uh, and then the middle of that area, you could have another endpoint. But at the top of Grover's Bend is where I would get in and float around to the, there's an island right across from the pavilion. And I've showed, uh, our park staff those areas and they seem very interested in that. I almost brought my little map of the designated floating trail. And, and, and this just came to me because I spend a lot of time at Pebble Beach. And I've seen people trying to float the river that have no clue of the river and doing a ninety-nine cent float with kids with no shoes and a whole family floating down the river. And they don't know where to get in or where to get out. So for safety issues, if we would help them with a little signage saying, this is where you can get in and this is where you can get out. And it would be real easy if you just parked at the pavilion. It's walking distance, kind of, it's in walking distance to get in and out. And you could do that loop very easily. Um, and then have, you know, the park to picnic in and you have your car right there for your drinks and picnic. So, um, that's one thing that I think would be real easy to add. And what would cost us? Signage. I mean, boom, and we have-
Ashley, have you gotten a lot of resp- Ash- have you gotten a lot of response for people requesting tubes?
Okay, yes and no. I mean, last year we weren't allowed to rent them, uh, cause it was shut down. So we, we got several car, uh, calls and we, we bought a bunch of tubes. And then, uh, now it's kind of slow kicking off again, so it's something we need to promote more. But, uh, I mean, I've, I've managed maybe twelve tubes so far.
Okay.
So not very much.
Actually, the, the kayaking trail in Riverside Park is not designated for tubes. It's, it's not, it, I wouldn't float it only because I tried to float it once and it was like a six hour tour and I thought I would never get off. Um, and after that I bought a kayak or four. So, um, um, kayaking in Riverside Park is awesome. Um, but floating, I think you need a designated trail where you can get in the water easy and get out of the water easily on your own. Um, but there's too many deep spate, uh, places in the river where it doesn't flow good. Like if you go upstream to the Frio or, you know, upstream to Guadalupe, you've got shallow water and that's where you're, you're tubing at. Our Guadalupe is deep. You've got small areas of shallowness, but for the most part, our, our, our general, uh, water level is like, we're usually running at three twenty-five CFS. So, um, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not made for, for tubing. Not that whole trail, not from the boat dock to the Pump House. Like I said, it would be the most miserable trip of your life and you wouldn't do it again.
I, I did it recently, uh, from the boat ramp to Pebble Beach and it took an hour and a half, so.
It's not bad.
That's from there to there.
So, yeah, so it's like if we focus more like, you know, on stuff like that, on the river aspect of, I mean, some of these things you're trying to create, you know, I don't know. But if we could, you know, emphasize the river, that was one of the things. That's why I actually became a Parks Commissioner is to like create river views. And it's, and it's helped us out a lot. I mean, I've seen such improvement since two thousand and eleven, since I came on board. Look, Pebble Beach is open now, but, um, Pebble Beach has so much potential there. We could pepper that place with, um, picnic tables and shade and it could be so awesome. And even model after, uh, Port Aransas, New Hays County. Anytime they've got water and a beach, we have a rent station so that you can go and push a button, get all the salt and sand off of you and get back in your car. And, uh-
The issue there though always is structures and how do you build it for a seven foot normal height and go into thirty feet with a flood? And, and that's, you know-
Port Aransas has got hurricanes and they have rent stations.
They don't have a tidal surge of twenty plus feet.
It would go underwater and it would, I mean, have you, have you seen?
That's just a challenge. I'm not saying it can't be overcome. But, you know, everybody thinks that it might be easy to put some structures down there. Cause I, I've been down there and thought the exact same thing. Gosh, it'd be nice to have some little pavilions and some barbecue grills. But it's not practical unless you elevate it up. And then once you elevate it up, you're gonna have to have ADA hand, access. And it just keeps going and on and on and this little structure turns into a hundred thousand dollars per structure.
I know. I begged Colby for those two barbecue tables that are down at Pebble Beach right now. And as soon as he put them in there, we had a flood and they were buried. They had to pull them out with tractors and I was like, oh my. But they pulled them out and they're being used every day. So, you know, we know when a flood is coming and if we have to pull out a barbecue table or pull it out from being buried in the sand, I don't know. I think it's kind of worth it because the area is so popular. And it's one of our primary focuses on, you know, for Riverside Park.
I love the area.
It was our hidden gem, but now there's a big sign that says Pebble Beach.
Yeah, I didn't know about it.
No, growing up, I used that, we used to call it La Plaita, in the old days.
But it is one of the most popular areas in, aside from the disc golf courses, of course.
Well, I think we should, uh, put that in parentheses underneath.
La Plaita?
See?
You're born and raised and you might-
Por supuesto.
That's what we call La Plaita.
But it's little places like that on the Guadalupe River that offer the beaches. Um, there's also some space, um, in Fox's Bend that has a couple of beaches. And like I said, coming out of Grover's Bend where the pavilion is, like right across from it, if you go and explore down by the river, there's like a little island and it would be like a perfect get out for, you know. It's a perfect another, Grover's Bend has so much potential in the back of it that's not cleared right now. And I hate to say it because it's gonna get cleared and then my spot's gonna be gone, but that's okay. I'm willing. But it, it's the one of the most, it's one of the most best places, most best places? Yes, that and Riverside Park. It's a wonderful spot, so.
Can I make a general comment? And I don't know if y'all feel like this. I look at both of these and I know y'all put a lot of effort into it and I appreciate it. But I'm not hearing that it's meeting what the people around the table are saying or have said about it. And I didn't get to sit in the Riverside Park, uh, meeting when y'all were sketching up, which is such a great exercise, but, um, I, I just overall, I think we might have missed a little bit and it's a big park, so.
Right. Well, I mean, I think we, I mean, we could easily have a two hour meeting just on Riverside Park. Um, I think that we definitely need to go back and just, you know, really figure out exactly where the disc golf, you know, is located and make sure that we preserve that. Um, but some other, some, I guess, additional direction might be helpful in terms of, you know, some of these elements, right? You know, do we think that Riverside Park is the, is the place where we put, you know, an amphitheater and, you know, and all these other elements? Um, because again, programmable space is very limited. Or do we actually start looking at, you know, doing something over closer to Vine? But at that point, you know, how accessible, um, is it to the rest of it or not? Or is the concept design literally focused, you know, majority on just the river and those aspects of it, right? I don't, I don't know.
You, you know, something else in Riverside Park that I'm really missing is the old trail system that used to go right up to the river's edge in Grover's Bend. Um, the parks just developed it, then a flood came and washed it away. And our previous parks director, instead of putting it back where it was by the river's edge, he moved it way up by the road. So on the previous trail, on almost every step that you would take on the, on the lower trail, you could see the river. So I know, I've heard people say, look, it's Riverside Park, we can't see the river. Walking on that trail, you could see the river everywhere. And Grover's Bend has so much more potential of developing a hiking trail all the way around the river's edge. Um, or up so that you can see, up, up from the banks a little bit. It's, it's a prime area. And it's almost all cleared out. You just got a little bit more to go.
And this concept shows it as number six, as a secondary trail. So for those that wanted to, you know, kind of veer off of the existing one and actually run through that area that you just described.
But go deeper down, go deeper down toward the river's edge. And Grover's Bend, it went deeper. Like this existing trail that you've got up here in Grover's, it's way up by the road. The, if you, and you can still find lots of areas of the original trail. And it pretty much starts at the top of Grover's Bend and it goes almost to what I call the first Pebble Beach. That is really like the first Pebble Beach. Um, it's off to the left, off to the right. When you, when you go to Pebble Beach, there's another island opposite of the side. So there's a whole nother place base that's, that's where the trail would start and it would go all the way up, um, to the lower tier, I guess that's what y'all call it, um, past Grover's Bend entrance. So bringing back that trail would be super duper awesome.
Does anybody else have any other comments that you think might be helpful for us as we kind of regroup on the conceptual plan for Riverside Park? Or I don't know if you have any other questions that you think might be helpful for y'all?
I've got a lot of feedback to react to and you have-
How much demand was there for an equestrian?
Very low.
Very little?
Very low.
I, I don't see that we need to have it. We had a place and it went to ruin.
I see about one horseback rider a year at Riverside, maybe two.
Well, I'm curious, um, about the soccer fields. This may be a little thing, but it may be a big thing. One of these concepts has five fields and one has four. And I know that soccer is extremely popular. How many, how many fields should we direct them?
So I'm not, I'm not sure, cause I know there are plans in the works for the soccer field and these are showing full size like champion fields. And this wouldn't, this layout that we're currently illustrating would not cater to, you know, young children. So the orientation and size of those fields would definitely be different than what we are currently showing.
So that's what I'm fixing to ask. I mean, don't we already have a plan for the soccer fields? Aren't they already designed? Then why aren't they reflected like that on here?
Should be unmov- Well, again, this is, this is a very, very high level look at the, at the conceptual drawings. And so it is identified on, on fifteen and one. It's just not necessarily the, the exact layout that we have. But it is that entire area of fifteen as well as one.
I think you're just asking- And it needs to be, uh, reflected on what we're looking at. I mean-
These are the conceptual ideas. These are the new ideas. It's not the old plan. This is the new plan. That's why it's different.
Well, I think, I think the intent is simply trying to have a conversation about where it makes sense to program elements, right? Not necessarily get caught up in, you know, the, the specific dimensions of them, right? We're trying to get some general reactions on, you know, what do you think of the general vicinity of the pavilion? I mean, I'm sorry, the amphitheater for example. Or, you know, like the feedback that we're getting on the equestrian services, right? Or even just the feedback on, um, you know, that we don't properly show some of the disc golf. You know, these, this is still very, you know, kind of high level, um, feedback that we're looking for. And I, and I agree with, you know, we can probably massage this a little bit and probably have something more detailed, you know, at a later date that we can share. And we're running out, we've run out of time anyway, so it's probably appropriate to do that.
Well, I was gonna say that like the amphitheater, it would be neat to have it where we were utilizing a view of the river. But immediately then we're in the floodway. And so then you have to back up and say, is it realistic to use this land for permanent structures? Or are we better, you know, with things that can come and go?
Well, we need to ask ourselves too, okay, do we need another amphitheater, right? We have one already in our community.
And we're not really using it.
Correct.
Right.
And so do we need two? If we do have two, how are they gonna be different? How are they gonna be the same?
Right.
Um, and so, you know, if it were up to each person, you know, if somebody has, you know, Riverside Park at the front center of their mind, they're gonna want all of the amenities at that park, right? If somebody that has M.O.K. at the front center of their mind, they're gonna want all the amenities at that park. You know, and same for Ethel Lee Tracy, right? Our challenge is figuring out how do you space those out and trying to look this as a system as opposed to individual parks. Um, because yeah, again, just because people wanna see more of this, more of that, doesn't mean that every single park is gonna have everything.
Sure.
Um, and so for us, we need to figure out what we think makes sense to have at Riverside Park.
Well, then I think the amphitheater that we have makes sense and not adding another one at this time. That's my suggestion.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
And what about utilizing our special events area? Like you talked about, Ms. Scott, putting a, a roof over that. That would help a lot, um, for booking bands. I had issues booking a band. They wanted a roof. If I could and secure a roof over their head, they didn't wanna book with me, so I was like-
Right, we've talked about putting a, a pavilion cover on it. I mean, I'm, I'm also thinking about renting a tent. You know, not necessarily the city, but maybe whoever's doing the event or, I don't know, maybe for some city events, renting a big tent. But, and we could-
The permanent structure might be better there.
And there's a release here, a comment about kind of- And there's a recent comment about kind of event space. I, I don't know if this is a possibility, but, I mean, we do have Club Westerner that's literally, you know,
Right.
just right there, right? And so I don't know if there is a way to somehow tie it in. And even though it's privately owned, at least from an access standpoint, you know, it might benefit everybody, right? It'll benefit, you know, Club Westerner if they can generate more events. And it would help us if it, if having the easy access to a place like that helps, you know, with tournaments and other features. I just don't know how easy it would be to kinda, you know, do that somehow. But, I mean, Club Westerner is literally like, if you just look at an area, I mean, it's like, right there. Hard part is, from a street standpoint, it looks like it's far, 'cause you have to go like all the way up and then around and then all the way back down. But anyway.
I, I think some of that amphitheater talk could've been, uh, steered from when they had the Memorial Bash there one year. They had it in that certain area where they're, uh, discussing that amphitheater. And maybe over three thousand people showed up. And it was right there where they parked where Riverside Stadium was and all around there. And I think that perhaps could've been where an idea like that came from.
Possibly. And I think maybe instead of maybe referring to it as an amphitheater, maybe it's really more appropriate to think of it as simply just, you know, a, a place that, you know, we've thought through, you know, that's where it makes sense to put a stage. And that's where it makes sense to have, you know, three thousand people for a concert. And that's different than an amphitheater, right? Because when you, people say amphitheater, you know, we're all thinking what you see at Ethel Lee Tracy Park.
Right.
But even from a concert standpoint, they run concerts out of baseball stadiums all the time. Why not utilize Riverside for that same?
Yeah, don't tell Brian that. Yeah, but I mean, you're, I mean, you're, I mean, you're right, but you know, other events that utilize-
I know that they get to replace the outfield.
Correct. They, they go in and they replace, they replace the field, right?
Yes.
That damaged all that turf, you know?
I get that.
Yeah, remember? We pay for it?
There used to be concerts in that special events area all the time.
Yeah.
Some cities we've seen actually purchase their own mobile stages or they can rent mobile stages to host those types of events, you know, whatever.
Well, the parks have-
We have them.
Right. Yeah, but this could be something much larger. But anyway, any, any comments, clarifying questions that would help us? We can obviously touch base offline to discuss next steps here with Riverside Park. But, um, I don't think it's worth going through that exercise, 'cause everybody's gonna say they don't like either one.
Both.
I'd wanna see the vote at this point. But, but no, in all seriousness, I, for, on behalf of Aaron, I, I really appreciate all the comments. At, at the top of the meeting, one of the things I said was, "These are ideas." They weren't recommendations, they're just ideas. And how do we know until we've put some ideas together and thrown them out there to see what sticks? We don't ever expect in our profession, particularly when we're designing park spaces, that everything's gonna stick right off. We've taken copious amount of notes and we're gonna go back to the drawing board. So I don't know if it's been wasted effort from our perspective and we really appreciate all the feedback. Let me, real quick, just, just a couple minutes. What we're doing now is we are in the process of wrapping up the overall needs assessment chapter of the, of the plan document. We hope to have that, uh, completed, uh, by June. And we're going back to the drawing board with these concepts. And we hope that here in the next couple of months, we'll be able to come back out with preferred concepts or concepts that are much closer to what you might be envisioning for all three of the parks that, that we've discussed. As I said a, a little while ago also, we'll work with Jesus and with Mike to make sure that if there are any other written comments that we need to get from you, that we can make sure that we get those over the course of the next few weeks. We recognize once again that you're, you're just seeing these for the first time. There may be other ideas after tonight that you come up with and that you wanna make sure, uh, come to our attention. The intent is that both the conceptual plans are brought to a point by the middle of the summer where they are close to concepts that you really think you wanna see for all three of these parks. And concurrent with that, by the middle of the summer, we hope to have the initial plan recommendations prepared. That at least we'll, we'll first bring back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And eventually, uh, closer into the fall, bring back the City Council, uh, for your consideration. We will also, prior to this process concluding, we will ultimately have another round of public open houses before we ever bring back a full master plan and final co- draft concept plans to the City Council for your consideration.
You know, one other thing on here, um, with Grover's Bend. I know lots of people have always wanted to see it restored back to the previous state, uh, before the flood of ninety-eight. Before the flood of ninety-eight in Fox's Bend, we had picnic tables everywhere, we had fire pits, we had parking, and it was one of the most popular areas in Riverside Park. On any Friday, Saturday night, you could go down, as soon as the sun goes down, it's all you would see is bonfires and every single little campsite and music coming out of every little party. So it was a place to gather and it's not that anymore.
Question. Are there any features or anything from parks that are really popular with teenagers and up? That you've done through across the state? Because we, we've talked about splash pads at nauseam in here from, from young kids. And we've got playscapes for, 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 for our young kids. But it's an overwhelming thought through the community is that there's nothing to do for my teenagers.
Rec centers-
Or pre-teens, from that standpoint.
Or big adults.
Just a big kid.
Rec centers have always functioned as those, those types of, uh, facilities that can cater to all different types of crowds and age groups and, and allow, you know, all kinds of different indoor activities to occur. So definitely-
Anything outside the box? Like, is it- Zip lines, you know, challenge courses, things like this? We've got a huge park, I mean, it's-
Some communities have like BMX parks.
Yeah.
Things like that, where they actually build out, you know, a place for people to take their dirt bike and just ride around.
Yeah, as far as-
I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Sure, as far as the challenge park type of facilities, yeah, there's more and more communities that are doing that. But the, the utilization is kind of infrequent often. When it comes to some of the things like Jesus was talking about, skate parks are now expanding into pump tracks in the BMX parks. And those are becoming much more common facilities. Also, RC tracks, uh, and even model airplane fields, we're seeing more and more of depending on locations as well.
Some of you may not know, um, since you were talking about fitness and playgrounds, I have to let y'all know that the county has just approved for the Victoria Parks Coalition. So we're trying to put in a, a new playground. It's gonna be themed family and fitness. And our budget that we're looking at is we're, we're aiming for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for building a playground out there. And, um, it's gonna be on the corner of Timber as soon as you come into the Patriot Park. And, um, just to let you know, we're looking at a fitness. So that's why I've been researching playgrounds for the last three months. And I've been looking at every fitness track there is and finally kinda picked one out. And, um, so modeling after the Tracy Park and taking some of the key features from there, really just two things. And, um, then adding a new, uh, playground at, at the, at the county. But at the fitness things, like you were talking about Tracy, you're gonna add two more playgrounds for itty-bitties. Why not add a playground for like the fitness track? So CrossFit people can go over there and so the adults can play too while the kids are playing.
Everyone, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, members of the commission, thank you for your time this evening. I've got two and a half hours to give Aaron a pep talk and, and we'll come back better and stronger.
Thank you. I have another question. On this front feature that y'all have here, where did you get this monster playground with this, this huge, uh, bridge across of it? I've never seen a bridge that big in all my research I've been doing.
Let's talk to it after the conclusion of the meeting.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, we're ready for you to adjourn the meeting.
This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.